Tori's speaking from there, yeah. I mean, you can speak up there if you want.
Okay.
Testing? All right, guys. Good evening. Please take your seat as we are about to start our public hearing. Good evening, good evening, Queens. Today is Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. The time is five sixteen. My name is Lucille Songhai, and I will be today's hearing officer. This hearing is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available publicly on the MTA website and YouTube channel. By attending this hybrid hearing, you consent to be recorded. CART captioning and remote American Sign Language interpreters are available at today's hearing. Language assistance services have also been offered. We received a request for Cantonese interpreting, which is also available at today's hearing. The MTA has conducted a community involvement and public information effort to encourage customer comment at this hearing. To make the public aware of this hearing, advertisements were published in the Daily News, Eldario, Amsterdam News, Korea Daily, New York, Haiti Liberté, Queens Courier, Queens Chronicle, Queens Gazette, Queens Times Ledger, Roskaya Reclama, Weekly Bengali, and the World Journal, also on multilingual digital screens in the subway system, and on buses and multilingual posters on buses. Notice of this hearing was also posted on the MTA website in English, Bengali, Simplified Chinese, Haitian Creole, Korean, Russian, and Spanish. Today, we are gathering public comment on the Queens Bus Network redesign proposed final plan. Comments can be submitted by mail, phone, online form, or verbally at a hearing, just like this. Responses will not be provided during this hearing. We will begin with opening remarks, followed by a presentation on the Queens Bus Network redesign proposed final plan, and then we will hear from our registered speakers. We will now start with opening remarks from Demetrius Kritchlow, interim president of New York City Transit and the MTA Bus Company.
Thank you, Lucille. Good evening, everyone. Today, I'm joined on, at this table by Frank Anna Carroll, Senior Vice President, Department of Buses, Chris Pangolinian, Chief Operation Planning, Robert Lai, Acting Deputy Chief of Bus Service Planning, and Tori Winters, Acting Manager of Queens Bus Network Redesign. I want to do a special thanks to Borough President Donovan Richards, who graciously invited us to his home. It's fantastic being here at this place and grateful, grateful to have the invite to this location. I want to thank everyone here who, who has made time out of their schedule to come here. It's a very important event. And those who are participating in Zoom, watching the livestream, for your time and for your feedback. This redesign is an iterative process, many years in the making. We've carefully considered and incorporated the invaluable feedback from our customers, elected officials, and stakeholders every step of the way. Since beginning the outreach on the proposed final plan in late two thousand twenty-three, the Queens Bus Network redesign team has participated in seventy-four engagement sessions, seventy-four public engagements. The input we have received from bus riders, elected officials, community boards, civic associations, faith-based groups, nonprofits, labor partners, advocates, community institutions, and other stakeholders will help shape the final iteration of the Queens Bus Network redesign. Now, I, I will say, I am no stranger to Queens. And having grown up and lived a couple of years in Queens, having taken the Q five to and from work, I am, I'm no stranger to the needs of this, of this group. I had to travel every day back and forth for work. So I know that Queens is a borough of buses. No other borough is as reliant on the bus service or dependent on the great transportation service of buses than Queens. From Flushing to Far Rockaway to Astoria to Auburn, everyone needs great buses from there and in between. In fact, if Queens itself, its bus service and its borough of buses were compared to any other transportation agencies with eight hundred thousand daily riders, it would be similar to Chicago for the third largest bus system in the nation. That tells you how important this region, this borough, is and, and the importance for us getting it right. We'd also like to point out that some of our bus routes still follow the old trolley lines. Queens has changed quite a bit since that point where we had trolleys. We know that as the populations change over the decades, so do the needs of our commuters. Ultimately, this bus network needs to serve you, the public. I want to say thank you to all of our staff who have worked for years to make this a reality. The entire MTA team has worked tirelessly to get this right. And that's going back to the drawing board right after the pandemic, after the first iteration of this. I want to say thank you to the public, because you have not held your tongue on things that you wanted to hear or things you wanted to see, and we appreciate that. Community feedback was essential in this process, and as a result of your comments, we made changes to the draft plan. The public hearing this evening is another chance to have your input included in your redesigned bus network. After tonight's public hearing, if there are any significant revisions made to the proposed final plan, we will publish an addendum to summarize any final changes before the final MTA board vote. I'm looking forward to hearing and reading your comments this evening. And now you'll have a chance to hear a special presentation from our project team. I'd like to introduce Tori Winters, the Acting Manager of the Queens Bus Network Redesign. Thank you, Tori.
Everyone can hear me okay? Perfect. So hello and good evening, everybody. Thank you again for taking the time to be with us here today and stay informed about the project, as well as taking this opportunity to share the feedback with us today. This presentation will give an overview of the Queens Bus Network redesign, some of the key changes we're proposing to the Queens Bus Network, and next steps in the project. One moment. Perfect. I think we're good here. Great, okay. So just a bit of an overview on the timeline. The project began, as we mentioned, in April twenty nineteen with the development of an existing conditions report and a subsequent original draft plan. Shortly thereafter, though, the project was put on an eighteen-month public pause due to the pandemic. After the pause, we came back in December twenty twenty-one, and we withdrew that original draft plan, followed with a release of what we called the new draft plan. So that was three months later, in March twenty twenty-two. We released our latest iteration, the proposals that will be going over and hearing feedback on tonight, in December of two thousand twenty-three. Since then, we have conducted months of outreach, including meeting with every community board in Queens, in addition to hosting pop-up and open house events across the borough. Our planning process has been informed by four key customer priorities. So the first one there being reliable service. Customers want buses to arrive when they are expected to. Faster travel. Customer, customers want faster service, of course, with fewer delays and less congestion. Better connections. Customers want better connections both within the borough itself of Queens, as well as to our neighboring boroughs like Brooklyn, Bronx, and Manhattan. And then simplified service. Customers want service that's easy to understand. From these customer priorities, we developed several strategies to help improve the bus service. So I'll go through those really quickly here. Simplifying the network, which refers to more direct routing and fewer variants. Enhance connectivity, which refers to new connections and strengthening inner-borough service. Improve frequency by building out a more robust all-day frequent network. Bus stop balancing. Expanding bus priority by working with our partners at New York City DOT. Improving transit equity by focusing improvement on areas with the greatest need, and then improving accessibility. While we run the service, we don't on the streets, and this is what makes it important to work with our partners at New York City DOT to expand bus priority across the city. DOT has identified twenty-four priority corridors for street improvements, three of which are currently in development. Queens Boulevard, which is the subject of an ongoing capital project, Woodhaven Boulevard, and Hillside Ave, which recently began community outreach. The new bus network that we've proposed in December includes a hundred and twenty-one total routes. That is a breakdown of ninety-one local routes, as well as thirty express route. This is a combination of entirely new routes, as well as renumbered existing route variants. Renumbering variants is one of the key parts of our efforts to simplify the network for our riders. One of our other key redesign strategies is bus stop balancing, which will increase speed and reliability for buses across the borough. Our analysis of the proposed changes show that eighty-three percent of riders would continue to use the same bus stop that they do today in the proposals that were released in December. Stop changes are related to four proposed route types that folks can see at the bottom-left corner of this slide. The first being local routes that primarily connect neighborhoods. Second being rush routes, a new route type that we introduced that's intended to faster-connect outer neighborhoods to transit hubs, similar to today's Q one fourteen that folks are probably familiar with. Limited routes that serve high-demand orders with high frequency. So in Queens, it's important to call out that we're proposing to fuse local and limited routes to form standalone limited services, but with more frequent stops than what folks are used to on limited routes today. And then lastly, the SBS or crosstown routes that connect across longer distances, such as the existing Q forty-four. So now I'll get into some key points from the quadrants throughout Queens. So starting in northwest Queens, we are proposing to extend the B sixty-two north on Twenty-first Street up to Astoria Houses, realign the Q thirty-three through Jackson Heights to serve LaGuardia's Terminal A, add continuous service along Northern Boulevard with a new Q sixty-six rush route, and improve operations around Queens Plaza on several routes. Moving along to the northeast quadrant, several new rush routes to better connect customers to the subway in Flushing, as well as Long Island Railroad. A new Q forty-five limited all-day frequent route that also provides twenty-four-seven service along the busiest segment of Union Turnpike, so from one eighty-eighth Street to Queens Boulevard. And then a faster connection between Flushing and Ridgewood on the new Q ninety-eight crosstown via Horace Harding Expressway. Now on to the southeast quadrant. Under the proposed final plan, the southeast quadrant of Queens would see new continuous service on Linden Boulevard via the Q fifty-one, so linking Cambria Heights to Ozone Park. Several new rush routes along Merrick Boulevard, Hillside Ave, Francis Lewis Boulevard, to help improve travel times to Jamaica, as well as rail and transit options. And then an extended Q twenty-two to Far Rockaway Long Island Railroad Station. And then lastly, southwest quadrant, we're proposing an extended Q seven, providing a new connection to the J and Z trains, a combined Q eleven and twenty-one to provide more frequent service to both Eastern Howard Beach and Lindenwood, and a more frequent Q fifty-four limited on Metropolitan Ave. We're proposing relatively few changes to the express routes. One of those is a new Q M sixty-five connecting southeast Queens to downtown Manhattan. We are proposing to discontinue the Q M three due to low ridership, as well as the presence of alternatives such as Long Island Railroad's Port Washington branch. We also are proposing some minor stop changes and frequency changes across the express bus network. And then all express bus routes will be labeled Q M instead of some of them having X and others having Q M. So where are we at? Following the public hearing, the redesign team will take all the feedback we've heard in the past months, as well as tonight, and then we will develop revisions that we will be publishing in the proposed final plan, similar to what was done in the Bronx local redesign. The proposed final plan addendum is the version of the project that will be taken to the MTA board to vote on. If approved, we will move forward with project implementation, which is expected to take several months and include, include a large public education campaign. This education campaign will be an all-hands effort from us at MTA with several weeks of outreach, including deploying customer ambassadors across the system. Thank you all for taking the time to learn about this plan, as well as come out and provide the feedback. With that, I will hand it back to Lucille.
Thank you so much, Tori. There are a hundred and forty speakers that are signed up to speak today. In fairness to each speaker, comments are limited to two minutes. At the one-and-a-half-minute mark, the clock will turn red, and there will be an audible beep indicating thirty seconds remaining. All registered speakers must adhere to the rules of conduct and decorum, which are posted in this hearing room and at the informational table located behind the stage. If a member of the public violates these rules, the MTA may prevent the violator from continuing to speak, remove them from the premises, prohibit their future attendance, or restrict the camera or microphone of a virtual attendee. Please note that each speaker shall Please note that each speaker shall adhere to the time allotted to speakers at this meeting. Time may not be transferred from one speaker to another. Remarks must be related to the topics identified for substantive discussion at this hearing. Speakers shall address their remarks only to the dais and shall not make personal, impertinent, insulting, or slanderous statements about any person, including other members of the public, members of the MTA board, or MTA employees. For speakers on Zoom, when you are called on, there will be a brief transition on your screen before you will be able to unmute and enable your camera. You will not be able to unmute or enable your camera until it is your turn to speak. In the event you miss your name being called, we will call you again after all other speakers in attendance have been called. If you have joined the Zoom under a name that is different from the one you used when you signed up to speak, please identify yourself in the Q and A function. You may also request to speak anonymously. If this is your preference, please indicate this in the Q and A function, and you will receive further instructions. Those joining on Zoom can turn on part captioning by using the CC button on the bottom of the screen. Sign language interpreters will appear on screen for all attendees. To hear the translated audio, use the interpretation button on the bottom of the screen. Please note that this live hearing is limited to a total of three and a half hours. Since turnout is high, there may be extended wait times to speak. If you prefer not to wait, comments may also be submitted by visiting new.mta.info/2024-qvnr-hearing or you can call 646-252-6777. Or you can send us comment via mail to qvnrpublichearing@2broadwayd16.94newyorknewyork10004. All comments submitted before 8:00 PM on Friday, July 26, 2024 will be considered equally and will all carry the same weight. Once again, the purpose of this hearing is to comment on the Queens Bus Network redesign proposed final plan. The MTA officials present will not be answering questions. They are here to listen. We will now begin the public comment portion of today's hearing. Our first speaker today is Councilmember Selvina Brooks-Powers, followed by Senator John Liu.
Good evening, everyone. Is it on? Okay. So good evening, and as the Chair of the New York City Council's Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure and a Southeast Queens native, a daughter of a bus driver, the issue of bus access is deeply personal to me. I represent Council District 31, which includes parts of Southeast Queens and the eastern end of the Rockaway Peninsula. For far too long, as I've said many times, the city has neglected outer borough communities like ours, leaving us in transit deserts without the transportation infrastructure we deserve. The final proposed draft plan is a start, but we need another express bus route from the Rockaway Peninsula bringing commuters to downtown Manhattan. The current redesign only offers routes to Midtown Manhattan, leaving the peninsula residents without direct downtown access. Also, I'm extremely pleased that we have added an express route on the mainland, which is the QM65. I only ask that it would be able to service also Rosedale, Brookville, and Springfield Gardens. We need express bus lines that connects all of Southeast Queens to downtown Manhattan and extend the express bus service into the night and weekends. So I've heard from members of the community that there have been challenges with getting to work and from work because of the limited time schedule. And with JFK Airport serving as one of our largest employers, it is extremely important that we have a bus that can bring neighboring communities directly into the airport. Right now, it often takes multiple buses to travel just a few miles to JFK. So we'd like to see new local bus routes that will provide direct connections. And additionally, we must improve access to the existing transit infrastructure, extending bus service closer to the Long Island Railroad stations. I will submit a fuller testimony in writing, but I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Senator John Liu, followed by Assemblymember Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas.
How you doing, Steve? Thank you very much. Councilmember Brooks-Powers forgot to mention that she's also the chairperson of the City Council Transportation Committee. She did. She did mention that. I wanted to say it again. Look, I'm gonna adhere to my two minutes. I've already sent you my comments on this final proposed plan, to which the MTA spokesperson responded, "I'm wrong, but I'll tell you anyway." I think it's exciting that we have the QM65 coming in. It's a new express bus plan. But what was not mentioned in the proposal is that almost every other express bus line in Queens is being cut. And it's making it more difficult for people to get to and from work and other obligations from Queens to Manhattan. So that clearly was not part of the highlight, but it is an important fact of the changes, which I think should be negated. We need more bus service, express bus service as well as local bus service everywhere. There are also examples, I've cited in my letter to the MTA, where bus service is being made faster, but because these certain lines are bypassing heavily traveled areas, commercial corridors, senior centers, and religious facilities. Obviously, if you bypass these busy areas, the buses will move quicker, but it misses the point of making people able to get to their destinations. Which brings me to my main point. In 2019, the MTA started with this bus redesign plan. And the then-chairman, who's still the chairman, said it was a cost-neutral or revenue-neutral proposal. That's ridiculous. We don't want cost-neutral. We need more money for buses in Queens. And so what I'd like to say, see, the MTA report on is how exactly is more investment being put into Queens buses? For example, it's not just about how much more money there is, but how many more personnel at any given hour there will be in the Queens bus system? How many buses will be in active service? And how many passengers will be served on an hourly basis before and after the new plan?
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you, Lucille. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Assemblymember Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas, followed by Michael Carlier. Assemblymember on Zoom? Assemblymember Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas.
Hi there. Hi there. All right, great. You hear me? All right. My name is Assemblymember Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas, and I represent the 34th Assembly District, which includes the neighborhoods of Astoria, East Elmhurst, Corona, Jackson Heights, and Woodside. And I'm also a member of the Assembly Committee on Corporations, Authorities, and Commissions. So I speak today not just as a legislator, but as someone who does not own a car and utilizes this very public transportation system that I am advocating for. I want to first acknowledge that the vast improvements in this proposed plan after the disastrous rollout of the initial plan in 2020. Today, I will highlight grave concerns that remain for residents of my district, especially since the bus system is fully accessible as opposed to the subway. So overall, our office has received complaints regarding the frequency of service and the elimination of bus stops, particularly near schools and apartment buildings where there is a concentration of older adults, such as the NORC's located along the Q66 and the proposed Q63 line on Northern Boulevard. In addition, the elimination of the 35th Avenue and 84th Street stop on the Q49 poses a challenge for the seniors who rely on that stop. The residents of my district have vocally advocated for six-minute service, an issue that I have championed in the New York State Assembly. The frequency schedule for the proposed Q63 that would transport children to the many schools along 35th Avenue and Northern Boulevard is extremely inadequate for the need. Every 15 minutes during the morning rush is unacceptable. But by far, the elimination of the portion of the Q101 route into Manhattan has received the most oppositions. This will be harmful for residents, namely seniors and pregnant people and people with strollers who rely on this bus to go into Manhattan to access the many hospitals and medical facilities along the east side. In addition, the elimination of the 20th Avenue portion of Astoria represents a challenge for those seeking to access the central business area of Steinway Street on a one-seat ride to Manhattan. So I join my constituents in urging the MTA to please retain the existing Q101 route. I have a lot more comments, but I will submit those to the MTA, and I thank you for your work and for having this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember. Our next speaker is Michael Carlier, followed by Nathaniel Hezekiah.
Hi. Good afternoon, everybody, members of MTA. My name is Michael Carlier. I'm the Parks and Transportation Liaison to the Queens Borough President Daven Richards. So on behalf of BP Richards, first off, thank you for hosting this hearing and for your commitment to working directly with the public and for our communities throughout the borough to ensure that this final plan is something that works for as many of us as possible. We know this plan has been a long time coming. We've certainly come a long way since 2019. And our office, we've been working overtime to ensure this draft has been receptive to that public feedback. As we're all here tonight, expressing various opinions and feedback, I continue to encourage the public to reach out to our office as we continue this public feedback process. That's because no plan the MTA puts out will make sense unless we hear directly from you and the everyday bus riders on how we can improve transit. So that's why we're here tonight. Increased bus speeds, accessibility, and connectivity need to be the name of the game here. While this bus redesign will not be the final conversation we have on everything needed to improve public transit, it does present a great opportunity to address the historic inequities in our public transit system. So while spare the room the full details, as we've been reaching out to MTA on numerous occasions on that, I did just want to take this time to briefly implore the MTA to consider the extension of the Q52 select bus service further into Edgway and Rockaway as well as reviving the old Q22A bus route to serve Bezoara State Park. Southeast Queens in particular has long been identified as a transit desert with limited access to reliable public transit. So on that, just thank you to MTA for giving us the opportunity to say our piece. Let's get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nathaniel Hezekiah, followed by Gianna Valente.
Good evening. My name is Nathaniel Hezekiah III. I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff for Congressman Gregory Meeks. First, I want to thank the MTA for having this meeting for the community of the borough of Queens. It's deeply appreciated. I also want to congratulate you on some of the positive changes that you made in the Queens redesign. Our office, based upon surveying the recommendations for the Queens bus design, has sent a number of changes reflecting the impacts to our community that we see that impact children at schools, individuals trying to get to the Long Island Jewish Hospital on the Q43, and a number of other things. One of the things that I noticed that's not mentioned here and probably won't be mentioned because you have to have a little bit of knowledge of the MTA is the fact that I've noticed counters that were out checking the viability of the stops that were offered as recommendations from our office. And I recognize that those counters were doing those counts during the summer where there is lower ridership in southeastern Queens because students and families aren't necessarily taking the bus that's frequently to go to school or go to work because they're going, taking trips. So I see that as a problem because if you're checking the viability of our stops during the summer, you're going to miss out on the actual number of people that are really taking the bus throughout the other 10 months of the year. Additionally, I've noticed that in Southeast Queens being a migrant-dense area, there are a lot of residents who are having to travel further to at least get time, get an opportunity to get on the bus because the buses are so packed. Again, an ask of our office is to increase the buses that are in Southeast Queens. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gianna Valente.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gianna Valente. I'm the constituent liaison at Assemblyman Andrew Hevesey's office. He's the District 828 Assemblyman, and he covers Forest Hills, Q Gardens, Regal Park, Middle Village, Glendale, and Richmond Hill. He apologizes he cannot be here tonight, but I will read a statement on his behalf. "After receiving an influx of constituent calls regarding the proposed changes to the Q23 route, my office got to work monitoring calls and listening to how the proposed changes would affect constituents' daily commutes. After hearing from the community, myself, alongside Senator Adabo, Councilmember Schulman, and Borough President Richards, sent a letter to the MTA chairman urging him to reconsider rerouting the Q23 between Forest Hills and Regal Park. By keeping the route between Forest Hills and Regal Park as is, commuters have a direct line of transportation to multiple senior centers, five public schools, and the business district along Austin Street. I would like to thank the MTA for being so receptive and working with us on the bus network redesign as well as the members of the community for voicing their concerns in order to keep this crucial service. Thank you."
Our next speaker is Kevin Montalvo, followed by Jennifer Stewart.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Montalvo, the Communications Manager for Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, who could not be here today, but I'm here to issue a statement on his behalf. We represent Elmhurst and Jackson Heights, Queens. Our transit system is vital to our communities. Our district is a transit hub with several trains and bus networks coming across our district. Our office is just a few stops away from the 74th Street Bus Terminal. Our constituents rely heavily on mass transit, and most homes do not own a car. Today, large sections of Queens are underserved by the subway system. Without new rapid transit, our fastest-growing borough's future will be blighted by congestion and auto-related pollution among the worst in the nation. The Queens Bus Network redesign has been long overdue, and we're happy to hear the MTA has taken the time to solicit feedback from Queens residents to improve our bus network. To that extent, we have heard from residents and neighborhoods the need for improved infrastructure to accompany this redesign. We need the select bus service on Northern Boulevard, enforcement of bus lanes on Northern and Broadway, deployment of bus priority signaling, and more that will help speed up our buses. Our community has been requesting additional select bus service since 2022. We need to be sure to not remove bus stops for the sake of being faster on paper if it will increase walking time for our seniors and students. Bus stops near senior centers, NORC's, and schools should be prioritized and not removed. My staff and I continue to receive calls, emails, and messages from residents who are frustrated by the repeated issues affecting our current area buses. We hear from neighbors how overcrowded buses like the Q32 and Q66 are or constant delays the Q39 buses experience. We hope the MTA has taken enough steps to ensure these routes will see drastic improvement. Not only is this an issue of transit equity, but of racial, economic, and environmental justice as well. Our working-class communities, immigrant communities, and communities of color are some of the most reliant on public transit network, and we must take steps to provide high-quality and reliable public transportation options. The positive impacts of this redesign would be felt not only in our district but across greater Queens, reducing congestion on our roads and emissions in our air. We urge the MTA to reconsider and thank them for using the feedback of residents received over the last few months and from this evening to improve the bus network and ensure speedy transit for all residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Stewart, followed by Heather Beers-Dimitrovic.
Good afternoon.
I would like to thank the MTA for the opportunity to speak about the Queens Bus Redesign Project, specifically the proposed Q one-ten. My name is Jennifer Stewart. As an elected official of the Village of Flora Park, my colleagues on the board and I represent nearly sixteen thousand residents of our village, which spans approximately one and a half square miles and is situated entirely within the boundaries of Nassau County. As you may be aware, the Village Board unanimously passed a resolution on July sixteenth in full opposition of this project, bringing an MTA bus into our village. First, I would like to discuss the indifference to our community with which the MTA has approached this plan. During a June fifth team's meeting, it was revealed that the plan being presented to the public is not, in fact, the plan. Apparently, the MTA drove the proposed route, and the northbound turn onto Tulip Avenue, quote, "doesn't work," unquote, for the MTA. And a left turn onto a more narrow, smaller road is the actual plan. This road has a narrow T-intersection at the spot of the turn and is home to one of our two public elementary schools, which requires a crossing guard to safely escort students to and from their schools. Having a New York City MTA bus on this tiny street is completely untenable. When asked why the proposed change, the MTA officials in our team's meeting said, quote, "Our commuters asked for this." Then, when asked to provide the raw data, there was none. Why does the MTA feel that this is in the best interest of residents or commuters? Additionally, the media has reported, as you said in your statement, that you held more than seventy community outreach meetings, none of which were held in or near, to our knowledge, of the Village of Flora Park, making direct participation by our residents burdensome. The direct negative impact will be felt by residents immediately. Traveling on busy one-lane roads, a New York City bus would clog traffic, make responding to emergencies more challenging. Having the route terminated at our railroad station will block valuable commuter spots, as well as two crosswalks and an eighty-eight ramp leading to the station's elevators. Not to mention, the bus would block the road for drivers.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
So not everybody gets extra time?
It's two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Heather Beers Demetritas, followed by Jack O'Connor.
Good evening. I am presently the Chair of Queens Community Board Six, and on behalf of Board Six, we want to thank you for the inordinate amount of outreach that you have done to our community and for the number of meetings that you've had with us. Taking that hat off and being just a regular Regal Park, Forest Hills neighbor, um, I want to talk specifically about the Q sixty, the Jamaica-bound Q sixty, and specifically the stop on Sixty-S sixth Avenue and Queens Boulevard. This stop currently in the plan is slated to be eliminated in an attempt to speed up the route. There are stops that preceded on Sixty-Fifth Road and Sixty-seventh Avenue, so the goal is not stop on every corner. Now, these are long streets. And initially, I was supportive of this. It made sense. But after carefully observing the passengers that use this particular stop, I've changed my mind. The passengers that use this stop, specifically daytime passengers, are mainly patients and, um, of local neighborhood doctors who are using rollators, wheelchairs, um, sorry, yeah, rollators, wheelchairs, walkers, and canes. We see that all the time. Regal Park and Forest Hills is also a NORC. We have a ton of very, um, mobile senior citizens who choose to use the MTA and and use the buses, but the problem becomes, it can seem like it's one block one direction and one block the other direction. The problem is when you go one block up to Sixty-seventh, you're walking uphill. And if you've got any of those types of devices, it is very challenging. To go the other direction, you're walking past a very large construction site that goes past the whole block. And so you have to go out into the street and walk in the walk lane next to the buses. That puts them into the street and where you're already feeling a little insecure. So, and that project is going to go on for several years. It's a huge lot with only part of it developed at this stage. So I'm asking that you please consider keeping Sixty-S sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack O'Connor, followed by Christopher Greif.
Good evening. Um, I'm Jack Connors, Research and Communications Associate at PCA C. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA and the New York City Transit Riders Council. This network redesign is years in the making. From densely packed rooms across the borough pre-pandemic, followed by a review and rewrite to Zooms, and now to this hybrid meeting, the redesign is much like the borough itself. Complex, multi-dimensional, and ever-changing. We appreciate that you listened to the gamut of stakeholders and incorporated many of the improvements that will mean a lot to people's quality of life. We also recognize that not everybody will be happy with this plan, and some people don't want to see any changes. But as the borough has changed and grown over the years, it's critical, particularly in subway deserts, that this bus system adapts as well. Buses are indeed the engines of equity, providing connectivity to opportunity. The newly redesigned bus network invested an additional thirty million dollars in Queens Bus Service, filling gaps in the existing network, which is largely based on old trolley routes. Expanding options shouldn't mean increasing costs, and with city ticket now available twenty-four seven, riding the railroad within the city is within the reach of of many more people. Yet, there's still more work to be done to ensure MTA riders are able to traverse the city using and transferring across whichever MTA mode is closest, fastest, and easiest for them. Allowing regular city ticket users to buy a monthly ticket that is discounted thanks to the outer Borough Transit Account and combining that with, um, free or discounted transfers to buses and subways could make it more affordable and accessible to more people. So again, we urge the MTA to adopt a combined monthly or weekly city ticket, ideally funded through the OBTA. Borough riders count on buses that run frequently and reliably. Um, increasing frequency on well-traveled routes and reducing things like traffic distractions and slow buses, uh, that slow buses down must go hand in hand. We again urge the mayor to enact the streets plan, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christopher Greif, followed by Mr. X.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Christopher D. Greif, as an advocate for people with disabilities. And just to let some of our elector officials know, let's not leave out people with disabilities because they do use the buses, and our veterans also. But today, one thing I have to remind that MTA doesn't control the bus stops, Department of Transportation, which is DOT. We do need to remind our DOT to check the bus stops, if the stop tops are up to date, safe for any walker, wheelchair, cane, or strollers. We need to remind that that accessibility is part of that. And everyone, as you know, this Friday is eighty-eight thirty-four. Happy Disability Prime Month. Let's remember, disability has been created for almost thirty-four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Stanford, followed by Suzanne Atchorn.
I'd appreciate if you don't mention the other part. Thank you. Keep myself in the private eye. I think it's sad, a few points. I think it's sad the MTA executive director, who could pass for Harrison Ford and Dave Ludlum with a bigger nose and a small head, decided to start this public hearing at a time at five P M., a time when people are still working, and a top-off no-show. What kind of nonsense is that? Are you serious? If I could sacrifice him, why can't he do the same? Did he no-show because he knew I was testifying, and he didn't want me to make him like Peter Calico, AKA the Devil's disciple, or say Big Daddy Calico? You only have two buses running between here and my borough, which, like Staten Island, is a forgotten borough. They run across the White Stone Bridge. Do you have any running across the Tri-Borough and Foxneck Bridges? No. Why? You should have but many buses running between here and my borough across all three bridges. I propose six bus routes, and I feel the only stations, the only railroad and subway train, subway train stations they serve are those that are fully wheelchair-accessible. So if you enter one station and the elevators are inactive, you can't reach the station. It would be nice if you could run a bus between my borough and Astoria Boulevard, but actually between Astoria Boulevard and Two Thirty-first Street, which are fully wheelchair-accessible, across the Tri-Borough Bridge and on the Deacon Expressway. This way, you don't have to take the one train, both the one train to Day First Street, to take it to fourth section and transfer to the end train to Astoria Boulevard, which is nerve-wracking. I can't submit, um, the proposal now, but I could submit it later.
Thank you for your comment.
Just remember, just get it together.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Suzanne Atchorn, followed by Mohammed Zakir. Suzanne Atchorn on Zoom. Suzanne Atchorn on Zoom. Okay, we will come back to Suzanne. Our next speaker is Mohammed Zakir, followed by David Paul Gerber, both on Zoom. Mohammed Zakir.
Good evening. Hi. Good evening.
We can hear you, please.
You can hear me, right?
Yes, we can. Please, please start.
Yeah, Mohammed Zakir, working in JFK Airport with, um, Airway Company. So, uh, we South of London Park resident, which is a, um, uh, southwest side, I'm specifically talking about Q ten bus. So we South of London Park resident, mostly, um, ninety percent would take a Q ten lo- local bus to go to JFK. And, um, in South of London Park resident, we have mostly, um, mostly the retired people who are senior. They also take Q ten to go there. Um, so please don't remove this Q ten from there. It's gonna be very, um, it's gonna give us very hard time to, because they say they're gonna bring, um, a Q nine instead of Q Q ten local. So, um, taking connection will affect everybody's life, especially in South of London Park resident. So please don't remove that, uh, from there because we 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 take, um, Q ten local, only Q ten local to go to JFK Airport. Um, especially the, mostly the, um, the elders people, yeah. So my request is that please don't take, um, Q ten local. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Paul Gerber, followed by Yuki Endo. David Paul Gerber on Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can. I'm hearing Mr. Gerber. You can start. Yes.
Okay, fine. Just a few things. Mr. X was correct. Um, there's no, the bus that we designed is supposed to swing past the bus service. Zero bus route along the Foxneck Bridge, zero bus route along the Clearview Expressway. You have one route that's supposed to improve access to LaGuardia. That's where it goes. It goes through, it barely goes to Quop City during the rush hour and doesn't even go there during non-rush hour to a lower density zone here. You cut back the Q forty-four prospect of starting from Fordham Plaza to go to Jamaica. You can have half of the Q forty-fours go via the Foxneck Bridge, the Clearview Expressway, non-stop to downtown Jamaica. It'd be a lot faster. Your bus system is is worthless without two things. One, fair evasion. You need to address fair evasion. The New York City Transit President takes the Q five along Mayor Boulevard. He should know along other bus routes everywhere, as well as subway stations, that there's a high degree of fair evasion that needs to be addressed. Two, the president of New York City Transit is fully aware, if he goes to downtown Jamaica via the Long Railroad Station, that MTA police vehicles frequently block the bus stop along Stuffin Boulevard. It is not any, their system cannot operate without. You guys, stop blocking the bus stops. Stop blocking the turn lane at Eightieth Road over by the Queens Borough Hall and the Queens District Attorney's Offices with the Q ten, Q thirty-seven, and stop and 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 speed up enforcement of fair evasion, as well as bus stop and bus lane blocking. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yuki Endo, followed by Stephanie A. Young. Both on Zoom. Yuki Endo.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, uh, thank you for, uh, keeping, uh, Q seventeen, uh, uh, Q twenty-five, uh, Q forty-nine, uh, Q fifty-three, uh, Q, uh, seventy-two. The, and then, and then the, eh, and then, another, this is adding a community. Uh, they want, uh, Q one to, you know, uh, because it is the only bus that says eighty-eight station, uh, twenty-five C, eh, F train, and the Queens Plaza, E, and, uh, uh, Queens Plaza Plaza. Uh, B, fifty-seven, uh, should be kept at the level uh, to give it a destination height, destination. One seat, right? Hmm, and then, uh, Q sixty-six, uh, turning around at the center of the borough is very narrow. Hey, yeah. And then, I have seen, uh, Q sixty-six passing that in Astoria Signature, uh, go to Flushing. And, uh, thank you. Uh, passing this unit.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Stephanie A. Young on Zoom, followed by David Pacararo.
Hello?
Hi, Stephanie. We can hear you. Yes, please begin.
So, um, thank you for revising the Queens Bus Redesign. When it first came out, it was like really, really bad, so I definitely appreciate all the changes. I just have like one small comment. I take a lot of buses, the Q thirty-two, the Q thirty-three, the Q sixty-six, the Q forty-nine. Everything is fine. Just just one small thing, if possible. Um, on the Q thirty-three, there is a stop at, um, Roosevelt and Eighty-second, and it takes you to eighty-third and, uh, thirty-fifth. And if you could just keep that because, um, it's close to the target, it's close to other, like, uh, fruit stores and and, um, it's just very burdensome to carry very heavy groceries, even just one block to eighty-first. It's like very difficult. Um, so that's all. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Pacararo, followed by Warren Schreiber. David Pacararo on Zoom. We will circle back to David. Our next speaker is Warren Schreiber, also on Zoom. Warren Schreiber. Warren Schreiber.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Warren Schreiber, President of the Queens Civic Congress, co-president of the President's Co-op and Condo Council, Community Board Seven, Transit Committee Chair, and past Bay Terrace Community Alliance President. The Queens Bus Network is in actuality a service reduction plan. In Bay Terrace, three bus lines will take me to Flushing, Flushing, and Flushing. There are no other There are no other options. Residents of Bay Terrace often say, we can't get there from ha- from here, but now it'll take more time and be more challenging to go nowhere. To reach Queensborough Hall using public transit, I would need three buses or one bus and two subway lines. If I made perfect connections, the trip would take an hour and thirty minutes one way. We can all agree, that's unacceptable. Making matters worse, it would need for an express bus to Lower Manhattan. I prefer to travel using public transportation, but the bus network redesign makes that inconvenient and inefficient. Instead, people in underserved in underserved transit deserts will opt for private or rideshare vehicles, defeating the purpose of encouraging mass transit ridership. I would like to suggest that instead of bus stop balancing, which um simply manipulates the numbers, um that the MTA implement peak hour skip-stop service, which would actually reduce travel times and better serve the public. I have full confidence in the MTA's ability to devise a plan that serves all of Queens, and I urge you to take the necessary stops to make this a reality, and I thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Pacararo, followed by Barbara Linton. David Pacararo on Zoom. Okay, we're gonna move forward to Barbara Linton.
Barbara Linton, and I'm a born member of the Dougerson Civic Association. I'm here to speak about the Queens Bus Network redesign project's impact to our neighborhood. I had the following comments. Elimination of the Q one-three express bus to Midtown Manhattan, why we're opposed. Proposed alternatives put forth by the MTA are either more costly, plus subway or bus plus LIRR city ticket, or more time-consuming local bus lines. Poor access to these other alternatives from the eastbound service road of the expressway to either Dougerson or the Little Neck Train Stations. Taking the Q thirty-six bus to Little Neck Train Station is not a good option, time-wise or money-wise. Even longer to take the Q thirty-six to Q twelve to subway. It would be worse for Dougerson, where there isn't a bus that comes down Dougerson Parkway to get to the train station. Best alternative would be to drive. We're already challenged with commuters coming from further east on the Boe Washington Line who park in Dougerson to pay a lower fare. These commuters spill out into the neighborhood and parking becomes a challenge for the residents. We're also opposed to proposed stops to be eliminated on the Q twelve bus line. We're concerned that stops will be spaced further apart for this line. The concern here is the impact to the elderly and disabled. In particular, we disagree with the elimination of the stops at Alameda and Northern Boulevard, both eastbound and westbound. It would be difficult to negotiate those stretches of Northern Boulevard on foot in both directions. Finally, a revealing statistic from the U.S. Census Bureau in the decade between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, the population of people sixty-five and over grew thirty percent in New York State. Thank you for your time and attention. I appreciate the opportunity to speak out on this issue.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Nia Rollins, followed by Dionne Narine Sutroban. Before you speak, yes, thank you for cutting off the music. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Nia. I was just, um, I'm coming to speak about the redesign plan for the Q ten bus that goes, sorry, that's all. Um, specifically the Q ten that goes down Rockaway Boulevard and One Thirty-first Street. Um, you guys have plans to completely um remove the bus? I think that's gonna be a huge injustice for the members of our community. I just wanna say the MTA really has not done a good job of um, you've been broadcasting this meeting. I had to have a neighbor tell me about it. There's been no signs on the bus. There have been no posters on the bus about the bus changing. Um, so a lot of our neighbors really don't even know, like, out of all the people in Queens, the fact that this is the amount of people who showed up should, you know, say a lot. Um, our bus, that that bus has been on that block. My family has had that house since the seventies, so that block has been, I mean, that bus has been, first it was on One Thirty-one until about two thousand and ten, but it's been going down One Thirty-first and One Thirty-first Street for about thirty, forty years. So for you guys to completely remove the bus, it just doesn't really make sense to me. And the people who now take that bus will have to either take two to three buses to even get to the train. Like, the Q ten bus is actually right across the street from here. I take the Q ten and I take the train. If you guys remove it from One Thirty-first Street, I'll either have to take it to Jamaica Avenue, which is not safe, or I'll have to take the Q nine to the Q seven to the Q ten to take the E or F train. Like, it's gonna be, I don't understand why it would be like making us do more, pay more for the bus, we'll have to take extra buses. And there's a lot of elderly and disabled people in our neighborhood, and I just feel like the MTA hasn't really been considerate of the members of, you know, South Zonepark community. They haven't really broadcasted it. I myself went around posting signs, and that's when people came to our community board meeting, which there was a huge turnout for people who were opposing the bus. So I just hope that you guys really take into consideration what we have to say and not just go along with the plan that you guys already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Stephen Bowman, followed by Jonathan Rinaldi.
I'm a Queens resident and an engineering graduate. My remarks reflect my experience as an engineer and bus rider. My analysis will be restricted to uh comparing the current and redesigned local and limited route service. The redesign increased bus stop spacing fifty-two percent from eight hundred and fifty to thirteen hundred feet. The final report does not compare average bus speed between the current and uh redesigned schedules. Here's the comparison for Wednesday, March sixth. Currently, it's eight point six-three miles per hour. The new, by redesign, it be increased to eight point seven-seven miles per hour, for an increase of two percent. A twenty-twenty-one report measured bus stop distances from major U.S. cities. The report showed that New York City bus stop spacing is among the greatest in the U.S. Other cities have shorter distances uh between bus stops but higher average bus speeds. How much does bus stop spacing influence bus speed? The cor- the correlation coefficient between bus stop spacing and bus stop's speed for major cities was zero point three-seven in twenty-nineteen. That's a weak correlation that predicts the redesign's disappointing results. Knowing bus route operating hours and frequency of distractions, when the rider really wants to know how much time a trip will take from origin to destination. Uh, taking a trip origin from every single uh census block in the city and essentially leaving every five minutes and averaging and going to the nearest subway stop and averaging by population, here are the results. For twenty-four hours, uh, the average is, new average is twenty-one point six minutes, that's a six second longer. For the nighttime average, it's mu- it's takes forty-two seconds less. Early AM, it's uh six seconds longer.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Thank you for your comment, sir. Our next speaker is Jonathan Rinaldi, followed by Charlton D'Souza.
Yeah, I just wanna let everybody here know that the MTA is an independent body, it's not public. These people do not have any of our interests at heart at all. And and the Q sixty on Queens Boulevard, they installed a giant bike lane where nobody can even drive. You guys are doing whatever you want without public input. The the low-income families, South Queens, please know who your local elected officials are who are doing this to you. This is the Democratic Party in Queens. This is Donovan Richards. This is John Lou, the communist. This is Salina Brooks-Powers. What they're doing is selling public property. You know why they're they're skipping bus stops? You wanna know why that is? Because city council and all the elected officials over here are selling our public property out to Lyft and City Bike.
As what was discussed in the Rules of Conduct and Decorum. In the rules, sir, in the Rules of Conduct and Decorum, you are not are you?
Yeah, let's go, let's go.
Please continue your remarks without
I will.
targeting members of the public or anyone up here on this desk.
Thank you.
Please continue. Please continue.
My time. First of all, Community Board Five and Six have already said no to the City of Yes, and this bus redesign is just another part of the carbon neutrality aspect of the City of Yes. We don't want this. Nobody wants this, and don't cut the bus services for anyone. It's supposed to be for the students, it's supposed to be for the elderly, it's supposed to be for the people who have disabilities. Stop cutting bus services. You guys are all making ridiculous salaries while you're cutting the services for all the people that live here, and we say no!
Our next speaker is Charlton D'Souza, followed by Judy Birdie.
All right, everyone. Uh, good evening. My name is Charlton D'Souza, and I'm the president of Passengers United. So let's talk about the facts of this bus redesign. There were hardly any public hearing posters in any of the buses in Queens. That's a fact. On the digital screen, since yesterday, there were no ad- advertising about this meeting on the digital displays. What did we see today? We saw all the elected officials come first before the people with disabilities and our seniors. And what did they do? They all bounced once they finished making their comments. And I'm gonna say, for the last three to four years, Passengers United has been very involved. And we're, I think we're like the only organization that's been involved in the Queens bus redesign. We've had meetings, we have had hearings, we went to different neighborhoods, and we spoke with people. And the way that this agency, the MTA, Metropolitan Transportation Authority, has treated us is disgraceful, absolutely disgraceful. And I'm gonna say something to all of you in this room. If all of us right now, tomorrow, next week, we start protesting outside our elected officials' offices, saying we do not want the Queens bus redesign, because equity was not even considered in this redesign, and my colleague is gonna talk about that later. This whole plan, the way it's been put out, and you guys promised us a final plan before you implemented this, but you changed the game on us at the last minute, and now you're saying, oh, we're gonna release the final plan after this public hearing. That is absurd. That is ridiculous. So go ahead, release your plan, implement this. We will sue you in civil court. We will take you to court. We're not having this. And believe in me, there will be riots, there will be protests, and we will get arrested. I'm not, I'm not afraid of this agency.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Judith Birdie, followed by Allison Hines. Our next speaker is Judith Birdie, followed by Allison Hines.
Good evening, and I wanna thank Charlton, because without Passengers United, no one would know what was going on, especially on Roosevelt Island. Roosevelt Island has the Q one-oh-two bus, which has been there for at least fifty or sixty years, and it goes from Astoria, Queens Plaza, to Roosevelt Island. The most important thing is that it serves Roosevelt Island and Kohler Hospital. Kohler Hospital is a long-term care hospital with five hundred residents. Many of them take the Q one-oh-two to go to Astoria to go to Queens. The new proposed Q one-oh-four has three stops going from Vernon Boulevard up Broadway, stopping at Broadway in twenty-thirty-first, uh Broadway and Steinway, and Northern Boulevard and Thirty-Sixth Street. On your proposed map, it shows these as three ADA-compliant subway stations. None of them are, and they're not planned to be ADA-compliant stations. So the residents of Koh- of Kohler can go to, now go to Queens Plaza, get on the E train, get on the seven train, and go places. Also, the staff from Kohler Hospital, they come twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They cannot go on a subway uh bus line that is nowhere near where they have to go. Many of them live in outer Queens. They need to get to other subways and other bus routes. Queen Plaza is the hub. Why are you sending people to Northern Boulevard and Thirty-Sixth Avenue? There's nothing there. There's no other transportation for them. It is absolutely ridiculous, and the outreach you had was a joke. We had people come to Kohler who knew nothing about the bus trans- the bus uh proposal. They could not explain it. They had no answers. They, MTA made no outreach to the Roosevelt Island community. We have thousands of people who live on the island and use the Q one-oh-two to go to employment and facilities in the borough of Queens. None of this was approached with us. We dealt with the MTA, especially Lucille, when we had the subway uh stuff.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Allison Hines, followed by Deborah Wright on Zoom.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Allison Hines. I think that the Q ten bus will be eliminating all of a neighborhood. Um, the bus services, children, students, um seniors, they would have to take the Q nine bus to the Q one-twelve. The Q one-twelve sucks. And that goes to um Liberty and Liberty and Lefferts to get the A train, and that will be an added fear. I don't think that's fair. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Deborah Wright on Zoom. Deborah Wright. Okay, we're gonna keep moving, and we will circle back. Our next speaker is Jess Muller, followed by Andy Pollak. Jess Muller on Zoom, followed by Andy Pollak.
Hello?
Yes, Jess, we can hear you. Please begin.
Hi, uh, sorry for the delay. Um, just give me a moment. Okay. Good evening. I'm Jess Muller, Constituent Services Manager at Assemblyman at Bronstein's office. While we have already submitted written concerns to the MTA, I'm reading these comments into in the recor- into the record on behalf of Assemblyman Bronstein, based on the feedback our office has received from constituents in Northeast Queens. While the next iteration of the MTA draft bus redesign is improved from the last proposal, there are still several outstanding concerns. First, the Q twenty-one route is planned to be rerouted to Utopia Parkway, skipping Bell Boulevard. Although there would be supplementation with Q thirteen, we have received concerns from the Bayside Village bid that discontinuing Q thirty-one service to Bell Boulevard would put businesses, workers, and patrons at a disadvantage and make it harder to access the Bayside LIRR. The bid requests that the Q thirty-one route remain on Bell Boulevard. Additionally, the Q thirty-one rerouting would unnecessarily complicate commutes for students at high-area high schools and colleges. Secondly, cuts to express bus services are problematic. The Q M three is proposed to be eliminated. The Q M two and Q M five will be reduced to midday frequency from every thirty minutes to every fifty-one minutes on weekdays. And Q M twenty will be reduced to midday frequency from every forty to every sixty minutes on weekdays. Commuters and the elderly would be negatively impacted by this decrease in service. Finally, there is a general concern over the increased space between bus stops, as this could make transportation more difficult for elderly and disabled riders. Opposition to removing stops from the Q twenty-eight route in particular was voiced. Specifically, no stop should be removed from locations in front of senior centers or facilities. We look forward to continuing to work together with the MTA to ensure that any final bus redesign meets the needs of Northeast Queens residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to note, the time is six-thirty, so the time for registration is now closed. So if you would like to still submit testimony to us, you can do so uh using a variety of different methods, either by email or by phone. I will repeat all those things uh more towards the end, and you have until Friday, July twenty-six at eight P.M. to get us in your testimony, your written comments, so that it is included in the public record. Our next speaker is Andy Pollak, followed Our next speaker is Andy Pollak, followed by David Pecoraro. Andy Pollak on Zoom. Andy Pollak. On Zoom.
Hello, Lucille. Sorry for the delay. This is Andy Pollak speaking on behalf of Passengers United. So this evening, we're going to talk about specifically the Q thirty bus route. Now, what is going on here with the Q thirty, you may be wondering? Well, the Q thirty, the way that we've known and loved it for many decades now, is at risk of being partially eliminated. The residents of Little Neck and Douglasston do not want to see the direct bus line from all the way at Little Neck Parkway and Horace Honey Expressway be cut going to the only direct bus that helps people get to and from Atlantic Terminal Brooklyn each and every day. So not only are you proposing to eliminate this route, which again has been out for many decades, but now you're going to make it inconvenient for everybody coming off this brand-new Q seventy-five route that you are proposing and are proposing to make everybody transfer on Horace Harding Expressway and Springfield Boulevard. Again, these residents of Douglasston and Little Neck, who've been there for many decades, we're talking probably since the nineteen seventies or the eighties, are very frustrated with the fact that they're going to lose the one route that they have known for many years. And I'm going to directly be impacted by this, because I want my one-seat ride direct to my eye doctor at Little Neck Parkway. So I am urging and begging the MTA, do not eliminate the Q thirty bus, because bad enough you proposed to cut it numerous times. In this final plan, it will be very disastrous. So I'm going to conclude my remarks. Thank you for letting me speak this evening.
Thank you. Please note for all remote speakers, there is a brief transition after your name is called to speak. During that time, please ensure that your microphone and camera, if desired, are enabled before you begin your remarks. Our next speaker is David Pecoraro, followed by Jane Lee, both on Zoom. David Pecoraro. David Pecoraro, we're going to have to circle back to you. Our next speaker is Jane Lee on Zoom. Jane Lee. Okay, we're moving forward. Our next speaker is Suzie Anderson, followed by Nicole Faison. Suzie Anderson.
Thank you. I'm speaking concerning the Q forty bus route. We don't have enough buses on the route. Six would be better, three in each direction. However, we also have a migrant problem. The migrants, the bus route starts at the hotel area near Kennedy Airport. We have about five or six hotels. That bus is always full, since it's the first stop of migrants. And the people in the neighborhood who are paying to get on the bus as the migrants get on free, they do not have any seating, and the migrants also need to be schooled on bus etiquette. They need to know that they need to line up for the bus, don't need to play music loud on the bus. And the children that they put in the seats need to be given to the seats of the elderly and those who are, who need help. Also, I suggest that you give buses to these migrants at the hotel, so they have their own buses. You are inconveniencing the neighborhood. And give them their own buses and give them a schedule, so they can get to where they need to go. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Nicole Faison, followed by Fayuz Ali.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Nicole Faison, and I have just a couple of things to say. One, the buses need to be clean like they did during COVID. The buses are dirty, filthy, and they need to be power washed during the middle of the night. That's number one. Number two, the baby carriages, I don't know if y'all waiting for a bad accident to happen or what. These people get on with two baby carriages or baby carriages with three people, three children, whatever you want to call them, and they take up the whole row. And sometimes they get up there with garbage cans and shopping carts, and the bus drivers are not allowed to say anything to them. And it's bad. And then they push their kid off on you. So you got to watch what you say. That's number two. Number three, why are we always buying stuff from other countries? Why can't we have buses made here in America instead of going to countries that the buses don't even fit our behind? That's number three. And number four, it's, it's a problem. I had a panic attack when I first saw the migrants. I thought they were immigrants. I didn't know what was going on in our country. But this is the only country I know you can come and you can do whatever you want. But in this country, we can't even ride the bus in peace. Be paying, and you can't even ride. But the bus driver give you a hard time. You work and you live here. But these people just walk on with a pass, and nobody says anything. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fayuz Ali, followed by Jack Epter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I represent Community Board Nine, and the views expressed are those of the Transportation Committee, which I am the chairperson, and by extension, the board itself. The city encourages greater dependency on public transportation. And in the coming years, it will be much more of a greater dependency. However, the Queens bus redesign, which we welcome, does not fit into what the city wants. And so we ask you to keep in mind that the borough of Queens has a very large elderly population, a very large senior population, and they depend on the public transportation to access these areas. Keep in mind also that the borough itself has a large transit desert, which the plan did not take into, into account. And so that large area in the borough of Queens remains a transit desert. The highly dense population required buses and more frequency and more equity and more capacity. If we don't have capacity, we will be confronted with loud, with crowded buses. We would be confronted with passengers standing on sidewalks waiting for buses, kids being delayed to school. And keep in mind that we have in the borough two airports with thousands of employees who must transit back and forth. Please do not change the routes for the Q ten and the thirty-seven. We oppose also the spacing. Spacing does not show that it takes us from point A to point B. What we will have because of the commercial corridors is bus sitting on the road just waiting to go from point A to point B. And remember, our seniors are in wheelchairs, paying walkers, and they have to transport themselves from one distance to a longer. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Epter, followed by Michelle Yaskel.
I'm speaking on behalf of QB fourteen and the Transportation Committee for QB fourteen. And as a thirty-seven-year former employee of the Transit Authority, working for more than a quarter of a century at the location that I'm about to discuss, which is the extension of the Q fifty-two bus, the Southeast Terminus, from Beach Fifty-Fourth Street to Beach Forty-Ninth Street. This can be accomplished at no, at zero operating cost increase. The way this would happen is the bus would continue along Arvern Boulevard, which becomes Rockaway Beach Boulevard. And instead of making a left turn on Beach Fifty-Fourth Street, it would make the left turn on Beach Forty-Ninth Street. This is a small adjustment, but it would benefit the safety of pedestrians, since there are many more pedestrians on Beach Fifty-Fourth Street. The bus drivers, who will no longer have to worry about people running across the street, Beach Forty-Ninth Street is ten feet wider. It will benefit some of the ten thousand residents that will be coming to Edgemere, that will no longer have to walk an additional five blocks to access the Q fifty-two. And at, at previous meetings, Lucille came to our Transportation Committee. She said that I needed the community behind me. I provided a letter from the Edgemere Community Civic Association. I then garnered the support of the, of QB fourteen. I have the letter. We've never gotten a response to either.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Evan Picardi, followed, oh, I'm so sorry. Michelle Yaskel.
Yes. Hello. Hi. My name is Michelle Yaskel, and I am a Queens taxpayer and Q ten bus commuter. I am dismayed by the proposed MTA plan for the Q ten bus route along Rockaway Boulevard and one hundred and thirtieth Street. Please leave well enough alone. We desperately need this route to be intact and not changed. The proposed changes will be very inefficient and compromise safety. It will double commuting time and double the cost for transportation. For example, if I want to go to the new Homestead Home Assisted Living Facility in Q Gardens at Grand Phil Street and Lefferts Boulevard, I would have to take the Q nine, the E train from Jamaica Center, and the Q ten that will take me only to Lefferts Boulevard and Austin Street, not the bus stop being eliminated at Cuthbert Road and Lefferts Boulevard. This trip will take at least an hour and will cost double the transit fare, not counting the waiting time. Currently, I take one bus taking a half hour and one bus fare. I don't want to walk a half mile to get the Q ten along Lefferts Boulevard. People working at J F, at the JFK Airport will also be inconvenienced if they rely on the Q ten along one hundred and thirtieth Street or along, or along Rockaway Boulevard. Please save the current bus route of the Q ten bus and consider its commuters. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evan Picardi on Zoom, followed by Christopher Leon Johnson. Evan Picardi.
Good evening. How are you? My name's Evan Picardi. I am a fourth-generation New Yorker. I live in Forest Hills, Queens, near Union Turnpike, nearest Borough Hall, actually, but I'm working now. I didn't prepare any remarks, so I want to keep it short and sweet, because, you know, I'm sure there's plenty of interesting people with interesting opinions on these things. I read all four iterations of this draft, or all iterations of this draft, and I compared it to a nineteen eighties map of Queens' bus system. So basically, in my neighborhood, you made a lot of interesting proposals and improvements, like sending buses down Asken Avenue, Yellowstone Boulevard, extending buses up one hundred and eighth Street to better connect the neighborhood. My neighborhood is a neighborhood where you can't get around the neighborhood if you don't own a car. Basically, your choices are walking or owning a vehicle. And that's sort of crazy how disjointed it is. I was disappointed in that, you know, rich people complained that buses would run through their part of the neighborhood, and so everyone else in the borough must suffer. My real request to you is that you reconsider, like in your twenty nineteen draft and your twenty twenty-two draft, to extend one bus from Union Turnpike Station up one hundred and eighth Street, so I can reach other parts of Forest Hills. That's really my only request. You, you first did the Q ten bus, you did it for the Q twenty-three. Now I'm proposing you do it either for the forty-six or your proposed forty-eight bus. Your forty-five, your forty-six, or your forty-eighth bus. Just extend a little bit up Queens Boulevard and one hundred and eighth Street. That's all I request. And I also advise you to look in Woodhull Street and Jamaica Avenue, Woodhull Avenue and Jamaica Avenue in Southeast Queens. There's a bus stop, how ridiculous it is, there's a bus stop like a hundred feet from each other, with the same buses. So.
Thank you for your comment.
Advised, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Christopher Leon Johnson, followed by Matt Kronberger.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mr. Churchill, the president of MTA. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I'm from Brooklyn. But I live in a district, the fifty-fifth district, and a number of the buses come from Queens to Brooklyn, so I have the right to say what I say about this. So I want to make this clear that I, I know that this plan is going to go through because of certain non-profits like open plans, transal, and the riot lines. They never advocated for any of these buses to go through the Jackie Robinson Expressway, the Grand Central Expressway, and the Van Wyk Expressway. I know, Mr. Churchill, you used to live, you probably used to live in the, the, this twenty-seventh district, which has the little piece of the Van Wyk Expressway. I want to know why from the MTA, I know y'all couldn't answer, but why did the MTA never had a plan to put any of these buses, have a bus route on any of the expressways, any of the highways? I know a lot of us drive. I'm a, I'm a passenger. Do a car a lot of time, majority of time in my life. But we need to start having buses on the expressways, because it's quicker, it's more convenient, and I'm calling on the MTA, I know you're the president for transit, I'm calling on MTA buses and tunnels to open up an initiative to have the bus, put one of the buses to go, like an MTA bus, like the bus that you run, Mr. Churchill, to go through the Queens, Manhattan Midtown, Queens Expressway. Once we have that, it'll be more convenient for a lot of people in the city of New York. I'm not against the migrants. They are just human like we are, you know? You just got to get around it. You just got to deal with it. I mean, they're here. We can't kick them out. You know, they want to get on the buses, they had to ride the buses, like we had to ride the buses. Just like they don't pay, there's people in, in our districts that don't pay. Why won't people that say, that's complaining about the migrants not paying, say anything about the minorities not paying? Or we all know why, because y'all go get canceled, y'all start saying that. But the truth is, like, we need to start putting more buses on the expressways and the highways. So thank you, Mr. Churchill. Thank you for having this hearing, and I'm about to get out of here. Thank you.
For your comment. Our next speaker is Matt Kronberger, followed by Kazee Zazadi.
Good evening. Hello. I thank you all for hosting this meeting. It's great to be in this room with a bunch of familiar faces and neighbors of the arena. I'm Matt Kronberger, the director of Parking and Transportation at UBS Arena in Almont, just over the Queens County line in Nassau County. UBS Arena within Belmont Park is proud to be a job center for the region and home to the beginning of the Q two and the Q one-ten bus routes. We are eager to maintain our guests and employee connections Eastern Queens. We want to maintain community access provided by these vital lines. Both arena guests and employees take transit to the arena on the hundred and fifteen-plus event nights and days of the arena, the arena hosts per year. As much as seventeen percent of our employees use either the Q two or the Q one-ten to get to and from the arena. We're worried that these existing connections with their existing commute patterns will go away with the proposed changes. We're keen to collaborate with the MTA on how these proposed changes may affect our guests and staff, and want our team members heard before final changes are put in place. Eager to continue to be in touch with all of you. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Kazee Zazid, followed by David Schnatter.
All right. Oh, I'll start my comment in the most cliche way possible, and that is.
Uh, I'll start my comments in the most cliche way possible, and that is a quote from Voltaire, and that is, "Perfect is the enemy of good." This plan is not perfect by any means, but this is better than what was originally proposed during this redesign. And I encourage the planners to stick to your guns by making bus service better to stop consolidation, all door boarding, TSP, removing buses from traffic choke points, and optimizing or getting rid of, of money-burning express routes while making highly requested route and stop revisions. But with that said, there's still a lot of room, uh, for improvement to address concerns. So my, my suggested solutions include a request to stop system for physically impaired cu- customers at stops slated for removal to mitigate walking distance concerns, having all door boarding on express sections on bus routes, for carrying triaxial dual-door, uh, buses such as the Solaris Urbino fifteen that can flexibly serve both express routes and high-density, uh, local bus routes, uh, as well as increasing deployment of articulated buses to mitigate route frequency reductions on over-capacity bus routes. All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Schnatter, followed by Rafael De Jesus.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes. Uh, thank you. Uh, I just want to focus for a moment on the Q seventeen southbound bus to Jamaica. Uh, once again, the Q seventeen southbound to Jamaica, the section from Union Turnpike to the Grand Central Parkway. Currently, the bus stops at Eightieth Drive, Perth, Midland Parkway, and Avon. And then goes over the Grand Central Parkway. According to the plan, uh, I'm glad you're going to be removing the bus stop at Eightieth Drive. Uh, it's very close to Union Turnpike. There's no need to have both. But according to the plan, uh, you're keeping the bus stops at Perth, Midland Parkway, and Avon. Uh, and you're designating the, the Q seventeen i- in the plan as a limited bus, even though you're keeping all of the bus stops, all of the local bus stops except Eightieth Drive. So you're keeping three of the four bus stops, three of the four local bus stops, and calling it a limited bus. I submitted by email back in January a request that you remove the bus stop at Avon. Uh, it's not a good spot for the bus stop because the Grand Central exit ramp is over there, and there's a lot of traffic at that area. In fact, many people, many commuters that can easily walk down to Midland Parkway and take the bus over there and speed up, increase the speed on the Q seventeen, uh, which is one of the lowest, which is one of the slowest buses, and it bunches up a lot. Thank you for your consideration, and you can take a look at my email that I submitted back in January.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rafael De Jesus, followed by Marie Curry.
Hello, everybody. It is an honor to be at this public hearing to, it, it is an honor to be at this public hearing to help, help redesign buses in Queens. I'm a Bronx resident, so ma- so some of you may be wondering, why am I advocating for, for Queens bus transportation? Well, I'll tell you why. I'm, uh, you, why? There are only two buses from Queens that go into the Bronx, and they are the Q forty-four and the Q fifty. That's great, but I think, but, but I think we need to raise how, how many buses can go to the Bronx from Queen, from Queens. But I do think there can be some improvements on the Q forty-four and the Q fifty. For example, the Q forty-four's Bronx Terminal is in West Farms, Bronx, but I think it should be extended to the Botanical Gardens via East One Eightieth Street and Southern Boulevard. This, this extension will make it, will, will, will let Queens residents go to one, another one of the Bronx's most popular tourist destinations, the Bronx Botanical Gardens. My grandmother took me there a lot as a kid, a kid. I also heard that they, the MTA plans to extend the Q fifty bus to LaGuardia Airport. I think that's a great idea, but, but I have some minor suggestions to make this the best addition to LaGuardia. One, instead of using Roosevelt Avenue, one oh eight Street, and Dittmar's Boulevard, I s- I suggest the Q fifty, after making a stop on Main Street and Northern Boulevard, should use the Grand Central Parkway to get to LaGuardia, via serving all terminals, and then going back, after serving all terminals in the opposite direction, use Dittmar's Boulevard and Northern Boulevard to, and Northern Boulevard to get, get back to Main Street, Northern Boulevard for speedier service and more convenience. But I als- and, and more convenience, but I also think some of the stops in Co-op City that are only served during rush hour should go to twenty-four-hour stops to make this the most convenient route yet. But I also have, I'll email, I'll, I'll, I'll send it out in a letter.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Marie Curry, followed by Lorraine Wills Powell.
Thank you very much for hearing my comment. I want to talk about the Q forty-nine. That's the bus that runs along Thirty-Fifth Avenue in Jackson Heights and the, the direction that goes towards the Roosevelt Avenue subway. So the recommendation is to eliminate Seventy-Eighth Street as a stop, and I would like to recommend that Seventy-Sixth Street be removed instead. Uh, I rode that bus five days a week from two thousand and ten, and that's probably a thousand bus rides. And I would say maybe only five percent of those rides had people stuck, could get on at Seventy-Sixth Street. And I think it would also be good for the drivers because it's difficult to make that turn. After you pick up on Seventy-Sixth, they have to swing back out into traffic and then immediately make a, a left turn on Seventy-Fifth. So, um, the reason I think there's nobody waiting at Seventy-Sixth is because they can't see the buses coming. It's at the bottom of a little hill, so when you're on Seventy-Eighth, if I see the bus coming, I'll wait. And if I don't, then I'll take the ten-minute walk. So I think Seventy-Sixth Street people, they don't even bother waiting because they can't see the bus coming, so they just walk. So, uh, please keep Seventy-Eighth Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lorraine Wills Powell, followed by Daniel Heredia.
Hello. My name is Lorraine Wills Powell. I represent Grace Church, Jamaica, which is located at one fifty-five dash twenty-six Jamaica Avenue in Queens. There are things that are not in your design plan that we would like you to consider. The westbound bus stop on Jamaica Avenue and Parsons Boulevard, ID number five oh three nine three two, is situated in front of Grace Church. This hampers the access of our elderly adults and parishioners and parishioners with disability, who have to be dropped off by accessory and private vehicles. The drivers of private vehicles are getting tickets due to the cameras on the buses and on the street. We have recommended relocating the bus stop to Jamaica Avenue and one hundred and fifty-third Street, or to the northeast corner of Jamaica Avenue and Parsons Boulevard. Also, we would like the MTA and the DOT to allow access to Jamaica Avenue between Parsons Boulevard and one hundred and fifty-third Street, particularly on Sundays, and to allow access from the church westbound on Jamaica Avenue to one hundred and fiftieth Street without having to make a right turn. There are signs posted on Jamaica Avenue prohibiting vehicles heading west from driving on Grace Church, Church's block between six AM and eight PM every day of the week. This has resulted in people getting tickets on Sundays during events at Grace Church and even at funerals. The issue has been raised that the buses have, uh, the buses have many riders that board and disembark at this bus stop. While this might be true during the weekdays, from our observations, there are significantly less riders on Sundays. I hope that you take these into consideration. Thank you.
You for your comment. Our next speaker is Dolores Orr, followed by Darlene Lonza. Our next speaker is Dolores Orr on Zoom, followed by Darlene Lonza. Dolores Orr.
Good evening. Uh, can you hear me? My camera didn't. Okay, thank you. So, um, I'm Chair of Community Board Fourteen, out in Rockaway's and Board Channel, and just a couple of quick comments. On Q thirty-five, we know that we've changed the route there to Rockaway Beach Boulevard, which is a fine one. Our concern is if there, and we brought this up, but I want it on the record here. If the, um, Marine Parkway Bridge gets closed because of construction, we want to make sure that the Q thirty-five continues to operate part of its new route, which is, uh, down to one hundred and eighth Street. Additionally, the Q twenty-two, this is very exciting for us, that the bus is now going to go to Long Island Railroad Station. We were the only neighborhood in Queens that did not get the city ticket. Now we have the city ticket, and now we have a bus that will take us to the railroad, so we're very pleased about that. The, uh, one other concern that, uh, I'm going to voice tonight is that OEM has not partnered with the MTA in terms of evacuation, not only in Rockaway, which is a Zone One hurricane area, but also other Zone Ones in the city. Buses to evacuate people when it calls for an evacuation. The, it is anticipated this year we're going to have four, four to seven major hurricanes. So we ask that if the MTA would take the initiative to talk to OEM to see how you can help save lives, not only in Rockaway, but in all other Zone One areas. Thank you so much, and Lucille, thank you to you and your team for all the times you came to meet with us. We appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Daniel Heredia, followed by Darree- Darlene Lonza.
Good evening. Thank you for this forum to comment on this large plan for our larger borough of Queens. My name is Daniel Heredia. I'm a member of Queens Community Board Five, as well as their Transportation Committee, and I'm here today to speak to the changes in my little corner of Ridgewood. While many here are rightfully concerned about the elimination of their buses and stops in their local blocks, uh, my main concern is making sure that we have the MTA's backing after this goes into effect. A major change in the plan that I'm actually, that is actually welcome in my neighborhood, don't boo me yet, is the reconstruction and the reconfiguration of a major line that goes between Brooklyn and Queens, the B twenty. It's been a challenge forever between navigating extremely narrow streets on Decatur and Summerfield Streets and dealing with sharp turns in traffic on Wyckoff Avenue as it makes a left turn onto covert going into Brooklyn. With all the new mixed-use developments going up on the block, getting this folded into the new B seven route on Cooper Avenue will significantly alleviate traffic from our local streets with less double parked cars, ambulances, madness, and so, so on. However, it remains to be seen how the congestion on Cooper Avenue will continue, as well as ongoing challenges with the Ridgewood Intermodal Terminal. There are sections where Cooper Avenue narrows into Glendale, which causes a lot of issues for the buses making some of those turns. In the Ridgewood Intermodal Terminal, we have areas where it goes up onto Gates Avenue and Palmetto Street, which is always a challenge with illegally parked mopeds, double parked cars, that often make it very challenging to, for folks to make that transfer to L and M trains in our district. So it's essential that the MTA keeps analyzing how they can make changes that affect commuters in both Ridgewood and greater Queens, and I hope that you all continue working with us and our community boards to ensure that we advocate for our riders everywhere. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yakov Pishchitsky, followed by Jason Anthony, both on Zoom. Yakov Pishchitsky. Yakov.
Yo. Thank you. I'm Yakov Pishchitsky from Bay Terrace, Queens. Myself and many are using the Q M two, Q M twenty to go to the city. However, I'm getting daily notification. Just today, five of them was canceled. Yesterday, eight of them were canceled. It's a daily event. Not only we need a reliable system to go to the city during the day, during the week, we need to reduce wait time, increase reliability, and travel time, especially during the weekend. Currently combining the Q M two and Q M twenty on the weekend, the wait time, they want to extend it to ninety minutes, and the travel time could be an hour and a half or longer. It's not possible, not practical, to encourage people not to drive. The Q M two has to be more reliable, reduce wait time during the week and weekend. It's not, it's really, it's not encouraging people to not to drive, and it's not accommodating their need of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Anthony, followed by Deborah Wright. Jason Anthony on Zoom. Jason, you can begin. I can see him. I cannot hear him. Jason, we're going to come back to you. The next speaker is Deborah Wright on Zoom, followed by David Prekararo on Zoom. Deborah Wright. Deborah Wright.
Hello.
Okay, we're, yes, Deborah?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Please begin.
My name is Deborah Wright. Um, I am a resident of Lawton and Rosedale, and also a Queens Power member. I'm calling in reference to the new Q eighty-seven, which runs down Merrick Boulevard, going from Jamaica to Green Acres and back again. My concern is, as a senior, there's a stop called Two Hundred and Forty-first Street, which is across the street from the Cross Island Business Building, which holds a SNAP Senior Center, which I go to. They're eliminating Two Forty-first Street and making us seniors go past Two Forty-first to Two Forty-third Street and have to walk back two long blocks, which I don't understand why. When you get up at Two Forty-first, you stand at the corner, you cross the street, and you're right there at the Cross Island Bu- building in the Senior Center. I'm asking that they keep Two Forty-first Street as is for us seniors. Also, there is business, it's a business building where there's doctors' offices. You know, I don't, walking back Two Forty-third Street doesn't seem like anything, but they're very long two blocks, and it's not necessary if they just keep Two Forty-first Street on the Q eighty-seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to note for all Zoom participants that if you have registered under a different name, we need you to put that in the Q and A function so that we can make sure that we call you. We don't have many more Zoom speakers left, but we do want to ensure that anyone that wants to speak, that has signed up on Zoom, you have not signed up under the name in which you registered, please put that in the Q and A function, and our staff will help to facilitate getting you, uh, up to speak. We're going to try again with David Prekararo, followed by Jason Anthony. David Prekararo.
Hello.
Yes, David.
You can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
No video there, but I'll settle for this. Great. My name is David Pecoraro. I'm a member of Community Board Thirteen Queens, as well as their Transportation Committee. I'm the Secretary of the Rosedale Civic Association. I'm not speaking for either, but I am a fifty-eight year resident at the Rosedale who rode the Q five A when that existed. I'm talking right now about the Q eighty-six proposal, and it's terminus. Uh, currently, or at least in the last iteration I saw, it was going to make a left onto Huxley. Huxley Street is too narrow for this bus to travel safely. I don't know if anybody from the MTA ever looked at this street. It's pretty clear it couldn't have possibly have been looked at because no one would try to get a bus down this street. If there's opposing traffic from a car, you will not be able to get both the car and the bus through. So my proposal's rather simple. Rather than making the left turn onto, uh, Huxley, continue down one hundred forty-seventh Avenue, make the left onto Brookville Boulevard, and then make the next, the left before Snake Road onto, uh, one forty-ninth. And then one forty-ninth is a very wide block. All the blocks I've just been talking about are safe blocks for buses to travel. So you add, it has the added bonus of getting that end of Rosedale transportation that they never have had. So it's a two-for-one special. It's safe, and it gets you more people into buses. So I, I beg you to use that. And finally, uh, to the other people, please, uh, enforce the license rules as far as people have to.
Our next speaker is Jason Anthony, followed by Assembly Member Anderson. Jason Anthony on Zoom. Jason Anthony on Zoom.
Uh, Lucille, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, Jason. Please begin.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Jason Anthony again, uh, LaGuardia Community College student and proud member of the Long Island Rebel Commu-, uh, ADA Task Force. A couple of things I'm gonna mention, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, the Q ten should be SBS, not unlimited. Uh, second, the Q thirty-nine, uh, it should be considered to be terminated in Court Square, not at the area of Queens Plaza. Uh, third, I saw a couple of people forgetting the fact that Queens Bar Plaza is going to be ADA accessible by the end of this year. Uh, third, the Q fifty should be SBS, not limited. Uh, another thing, the Q thirty-two should be streamlined. Once it enters Manhattan, it should be continuing along Sixtieth Street, continuing into Central Park South, turning left into Seventh Avenue, then ending where, where it ends now. And we're going in the Q five and the Q eighty-five. It should stay as it is because people like myself like to go to Green Acres Mall to do shopping. So it's not fair that we need to get used to the fact that we need to use two new routes to get from Jamaica to Green Acres Mall because we don't, we don't need to take the Long Island Rebel to Valley Stream and then walk fifteen minutes. So that, that's what I have to say.
Assembly Member Anderson, followed by Jack Nierenberg.
All right. Can you all hear me? All right. Good evening. Thank you to, um, all the board members and folks who are here from the MTA. I'm Assembly Member Anderson, and I represent parts of Thirty First Assembly, parts of Southeast Queens, which is the Thirty First Assembly District. I wanted to add my voice to two of my constituents who spoke um, what Mr. Pecoraro said about the Q, I believe he said about the Q eighty-five or Q five bus, wanted to add my voice to that and to the last constituent that spoke on the Q ten. Um, but I wrote, uh, to you all, I wrote um, some remarks on behalf of my district, a sign-on letter that I put together from groups and organizations, nonprofits that believe, uh, in a vision and increasing and enhancing service on the Rockaway Peninsula. And we can do this, uh, by expanding and extending the Q fifty-two bus service, which was a promise that was made in part to the community when it was first extended to Beach Fifty-four Street. We want to extend it further east. The Rockways is expecting upwards of thirty thousand new residents moving into the peninsula over the next five to ten years with all of the development. And so we want to have bus service that adequately responds to the increased population. We believe, and all of this is in writing, you all have received that letter, we'll send it again. We believe, um, that that bus will help people get to the mainland of Queens. I also believe that we should have Q twenty-two rush service, and that rush service, I also drew a route for you all and submitted it to you all. Uh, and that route should run from JFK Airport to the Rockaways, serving as a redundancy route for a service when a service has to be suspended uh, for track work and also supports the only part of my district that can't get to the most important part of my district arguably, which is JFK Airport. There's thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of jobs there. We want to make sure that there's bus travel from the Rockaway Peninsula. As I close, I want to thank you all for working hard on the bus redesign and everything else is written in remarks. So I thank you all. Thank you, Lucille, and to the rest of the board members.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jack Nierenberg, followed by Howard Bernbaum.
Good evening. I'm Jack Nierenberg. I'm the Vice President of Passengers United. I'm gonna start with a quote from Inez Evans. If you're sitting in your office and designing a route, you're doing the community an injustice. That is exactly what we're seeing with the MTA. It doesn't matter to me how long this plan has been in progress because it's been flawed from the get-go. How can we claim that this plan is equitable when we're seeing the elimination of over fourteen hundred bus stops in Queens, which will seriously disenfranchise senior citizens, people with disabilities, and other vulnerable members of the communities who can't walk farther to get the buses that they're getting right now? How can we also claim this is equitable when routes are being shifted that are creating even more transit deserts? And furthermore, how can we claim that this plan is equitable when it was admitted to me by one of your colleagues that no equity metrics were established at all? Which, first of all, that should be done before you even put pen on paper at the very beginning of the plan. And furthermore, an equity analysis should not come at the end. It should come at the very beginning. It should have been done from the get-go because everything you do from that point is gonna be skewed. It's not gonna be done properly. And furthermore, talking about equity and public engagement, this hearing should not have been happening today. It should have been pushed back to at least January, and the public comment period should have been pushed back to at least, uh, January twenty twenty-five. Because right now, public engagement is lacking. We barely reach even one percent of the population in Queens. So what we need to see is we need to see another hearing and another round of public engagement. I want to see all of you actually on the buses, speaking to people. Go to where they are. Don't make them come to you. Because right now, if, and properly empathize with people. I want to see a shift in the mindset of everyone, properly institutionalize equity and empathize with people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Howard Bernbaum, followed by Michael Seidel.
Good evening. Welcome to Queens Bar Hall. Today, I want to speak about the MTA bus. We had the MTA bus started in two thousand and six. We had the Queens Private Bus Lines run better than the MTA bus. Why don't we change it back to the Queens Private Bus Lines better than the MTA bus and take away those security guards, and they sleep in their, in their vehicles all day long, and they don't even check anything. And number two, I want the Q sixty to be limited stops instead of local because people waiting so long for the sixty from, it takes sixty-five minute headway from the city to Jamaica. It is ridiculous. And also, I want to graduate Dennis to our MTA, to the New York City Transit Bowl and wish him good luck in his new job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Seidel, followed by Carl Pereira.
That was perfect transportation. My name is Michael Seidel. I'm a member of Community Board, I was a member of Community Board Eight, uh, where I previously made a proposal about eight to ten years ago. And somehow or other, the three people that came to our Transportation Committee, listen, I am in favor of the Q seventy-three. It answers all my calls. I, I right now go to, uh, Oakland Gardens. From Q Garden Hills, I gotta take the twenty-five to the eighty-eight to, to the, uh, thirty. Or if I go the other way to Union Turnpike, I'm still in, in a three-bus disaster. If I take the seventy-three, I have a walker there. I have a, um, I have a scooter also. I am a senior, eighty-one years old. Seniors cannot walk more than three blocks. As you see, I just walked from the other room and I'm puffing a little. So I am in favor of the route for the seventy-three. And also, the DOT does work with you. Seventy-second Avenue and Main Street is an island, a service road. I have a proposal in my, in, in the packet there, my, in my packet, that they are gonna take the island and bubble it out into the service road so that the sidewalk is wider, and they will build a curb cut because it is not ADA compliance. I used to also be on Queens Independent Living Center Board of Directors. So I'm totally in favor of that. I also like the option that you're taking the eighty-eight and straightening it out all the way to the end. So I have another option.
Sir, thank you for your comment. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Carl Pereira, followed by Frederick Wells.
Hi, I'm Carl Pereira. I'm the, uh, Board Member in Treasure of Passengers United. And I'm here today, I think, um, you know, we, we submitted our report with some bus changes, and I'll be submitting my own online. But I'm gonna talk about the fare policy and transfer policy at the MTA. Right now, the MTA only allows one transfer, uh, with the MetroCard and one transfer with Omni. There's a lot of cases where people need more than one transfer. People going from a bus to a subway, and then they get out of the subway, they need to take another bus. A lot of, a lot of seniors, a lot of people that don't have, that are disabled, but not disabled enough to get accessorized, they take buses. They can't take subways. They, they, each station doesn't have handicapped accessibility. So a lot of people need to take more than one, more than two buses to get to their destinations. If you're traveling, uh, one side of Queens, the other side of Queens, you could take three buses if you're going into the Bronx. You could take four, five, you know, it, it could get really costly. So I think if we put a time-based transfer policy up to two hours, unlimited transfers, that would help out a lot, a lot of people, a lot of sen-, a lot of seniors that take bu-, that only can take buses. So, uh, uh, when you go on the subway, you could take numerous subway lines. But when it comes to buses, you're only allowed one transfer. So I think that would be a revolution. Two, up to two hours unlimited, you tap with your Omni now, everybody, a lot of people use Omni, it'd be very easy, it's simple to implement. And overnight, they can make two hours and thirty minutes course of the time span. And another thing with the fare capping, I wanted to bring this up. A lot of people work home a couple days a week. They, they can never reach that seven-day maximum. So I think you keep the seven-day fare cap at thirty-four dollars, but on a day, maybe put in a daily fare cap within the seven days. So if a person gets twenty-five percent of that fare cap, say it's eight dollars and twenty-five cents a day, they go almost three, three rides. The, the rest of the ride be free for that day. So this way, if they don't accumulate seven days, they don't get penalized. Because if you, if you use the transit system four days a week, by the time you start, the next week, you never ever reach that fare cap if you're only going one, one trip a day. So this is my suggestions. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Wells, followed by Karina Nieves.
Good evening. I'm Frederick Wells. Okay, I'm gonna first start off with, if, if you have to purchase an unlimited MetroCard just to work three, uh, four days a week because you're required to take bus, train, bus, 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 or four buses or whatever, that's a transit injustice for, especially for a person who can't afford it. Secondly, and as a lot of people are not aware, I, I have looked at the transit form, there was a proposal to have the Q seven sent to Green Acres Mall. I'm strongly support, supported that because the Q eighty-five does not service Rockaway Boulevard. And you need a variation of service. You need more route, more buses going on the Q fi-, Q five, what you propose, eighty-seven, whatever, going to Jamaica. And you need, need some, need buses along Rockaway Boulevard going to the A train. Especially with Southeast Queens, we need, we need to get to the A train more so than the J train because the A is low faster going to downtown Brooklyn and low in Manhattan. And if you need to connect with the R train, going to Sunset Park. Other, other than that, other than that, um, the, okay, other than that, I, I suggested the Q fifty be brought down to Jamaica and have, and have the BX twenty-three do LaGuardia because a lot of people in the Bronx, they're not gonna wanna come through, go through Flushing. And, and, and other than that, I'm looking in right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karina Nieves, followed by Rose Scott.
Gonna put my clock on. Oh, wait, there is a clock right there. Um, all right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for having a hearing in the middle of summer when no one's around and everyone's on vacation, uh, chilling on the beach in Rockaway Beach. It's a disservice to the, to the people of Queens that you're having this hearing now. This, this should really be during the, the fall. Or, you know, when you have a hearing, when no one is around during the summertime, I mean, it could have been a hundred-degree day, it could have had like probably no one come. Like, we, we need to have better outreach. The outreach that you did is paltry. And you know what the definition of paltry means? It's meager. It's small. The outreach need, should have been done better. Um, could go, just doing Zoom meetings and pop-ups and going to community boards is not enough. You needed to go to every civics association in Queens. And you needed to, uh, do this, because people don't look at Zoom. Zoom is very disconnecting. Uh, there's a lot of seniors that don't even maybe have a cell phone or internet connection, or low-income families may not ha-, may have a cell phone and they may not be able to like look at Zoom. So the outreach that you did is paltry. And honestly, the amount of people that are probably here, here tonight are, are transit advocates and knew about it. To my fellow Q ten bus riders, I agree with you. If you're, if you're still here, we're gonna keep advocating because it's a disservice that you're gonna do cuts to South Ozone Park. The JFK Airport, the reason why we have those buses and we have the amount of service that we have is because that bus is for South Ozone Parks and for JFK Airport. Transitioning everything to Q thirty-seven is a disservice because that bus will now have a longer wait time with the combined two buses that bypass and non-bypass to Aqueduct and now goes to straight into JFK Airport. Using the excuse of the, of the construction is, is honest.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Rose Scott, followed by Walter Griffin.
Good evening. My name is Rose Scott, and I'm a Southeast Queens commuter. The two buses that I'm concerned about is the Southeast Queens X sixty-three Express Bus. The MTA is planning to move all seventeen stops off of Third Avenue. Per the MTA, this is due to a difficult turn. Where this turn is, I don't know. They didn't say. The removal of the stops on Third Avenue would be a tremendous inconvenience for the commuters. This was an additional fifteen-minute walk per day in the morning from Madison Avenue and Fortieth Street. Madison Avenue and Fortieth Street is where I pick up the X sixty-three bus at the end of the day. When I walk from Third Avenue and Forty-second Street, carrying my pocketbook and pulling a bag because I work rem-, remote also. So I'm lugging and I'm pulling, and it's just, it's an inconvenience, especially for me. Then I also. pulling. And it's just, it's an inconvenience, especially for me. Then I also noticed that when I was going through your, um, MTA redesign book, it seems like to me that the commuters that live, I have nothing against Southeast Queens, their express buses for some reason are still going on Third Avenue. You can check it out yourself, the Q M thirty-one, the Q M thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six. So my question is, why are the three express buses in Southeast Queens, X sixty-three, X sixty-four, and X sixty-eight, all being taken off of Third Avenue and we all have to walk further? Also, the other bus that I'm concerned about is the bus near my house on a hundred and twentieth Avenue. The concern is that when the Q eighty-four bus leaves Jamaica and it comes down Merrick and Basely and it makes a short left then a short right onto a hundred and twentieth Avenue, the first stop is Urban. The second stop is Sunbury. I know that there's six more stops down before it gets to, the last stop is Laurton Parkway. I can't understand why you're removing these bus stops off of a hundred and twentieth Avenue when the Q eighty-four is the only bus we have on that route.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Walter Griffin, followed by Davina and Patrick Carl.
Hello, everybody. My, my name is Walter Griffin. I'm resident of, of Jamaica, Queens. Um, sometimes I usually go to the, uh, Carla Bank. Um, um, they took away the, the Q nine A, they had it years ago from going from Linden Boulevard, from, from Rockaway Boulevard to New Linden to Merrick, to, to the terminal. But I, I hope they could bring it back, you know. Uh, I hope they bring it back. Also, um, you know, on Q six, um, it's very bad because it's, it gets too crowded, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, the, the stop from, um, Archer, you know, in the subten, got too many people, you know, the, the, the whole day and, um, there's not enough buses to pick them up. So, um, we, we need, you need more buses to, uh, solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Davina and Patrick Carl. Okay, our next speaker is Israel Peskowitz. Peskowitz, Israel?
Hello, everybody. My name is Israel Peskowitz. I'm a lifelong resident of Kew Gardens Hills. I'm a member of Community Board Eight and the Transportation Committee and of the JFK Democratic Club. First of all, thank you all for sitting here all night taking our abuse. Now, here's some more abuse. When I first came here, I was gonna talk about my neighborhood. The original plan was audacious. It was insane even, but it added transit. This new final plan, it takes away transit from our neighborhood. It removes stops and lowers the frequency. I thought it was just our neighborhood that was getting shafted, but listening to everybody else here, it's not just us. Everybody's upset about this. Everyone's losing transit. One thing in particular I'd like to address is this concept you have of removing buses to increase the speed. People want speed, they'll take their car. They take the buses for convenience. Taking away stops means less people will be taking the buses, not more, especially on, for example, the local Q sixty-four in my neighborhood, which stops on every avenue. Sounds ridiculous. But people who can't walk, like me, people who are old, or even people who are lazy, are less likely to take the bus if you keep on changing the, if you take away their stops. Um, let me address some other, other local issues. Um, please do not remove the Q twenty-eight. It's called the Q twenty because it goes in Twentieth Avenue and now you're taking away its bus to Twentieth Avenue. A lot of people without cars rely on the Q twenty to get a one-seat trip to and from the mall. They do not want us to get off in flushing with a ton of packages and try to find another bus to get home. Um, also, um, the Q twenty, uh, the Q twenty-eight, if the Q twenty-eight is being removed, we're losing half of the buses that ran on the Q twenty-A-B route. And on top of that, you're reducing frequency. That's unacceptable. And additionally, in Casino Boulevard, you're removing the Q twenty-three-four and only leaving the Qs twenty-five. The Q twenty-five has increases in frequency during, uh, during the week, but not on weekends, meaning you're taking away a lot of transit from that neighborhood. Um, also, please bring back the Q seventy-four. Thank you and have a great day.
Our next speaker is Jessica Zillo, followed by Marco Cruz. Jessica Zillo.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Mine is really short and simple. I was really appalled to find out that the Q twenty-three and the Q fifty-four was gonna be taken away, uh, this bus stop in front of the Metropolitan Learning Campus that that includes a sixth to twelve school, a high school, and a D seventy-five program. I understand that the bus stop has been reinstated, but I also worry that there's other stops that have been removed from around schools. So if there is, on the chopping block, a, a, a bus stop from around the school, it should be put back on and a different stop should be removed. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marco Cruz, followed by Tammy Asherov.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my name is Marco Cruz and I am the Director of Constituent Services and Support Services for Assemblyman Russan Berger, Representative Twenty-seventh Assembly District. Um, I'm simply here to speak on behalf of him and read some of the comments that some of our constituents have expressed, um, this evening. Uh, first and foremost, we would like to thank the MTA, um, for hosting this public forum to discuss the redesign. But we stand firmly behind the concerns of our constituents. Um, we've received numerous calls, emails, public comments about their fear of loss of service, especially with the routes of Q sixty-four, Q sixty-five, uh, Q twenty-eight, like we heard tonight. Um, our goal, and I believe the MTA's goal is to, uh, make transit accessible and expand service, not reduce service. Um, the Assembly Member hopes that you hear the concerns and comments and complaints of the people today and act on them before finalizing any plan. Thank you and good evening.
Our next speaker is Tammy Asherov, followed by David Kupferberg.
Yes, hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I wanted to talk about the, uh, Q sixty-four, Q seventy-three, I call it like a combination. Uh, I live in Fresh Meadows, not far from Seventy-third Avenue. And I have to either take the corridors of Horse Harding or Union Turnpike, so it's like a long walk in either direction. I'm taking two buses with a long walk. Some people are not capable of all this physically. And it's a burden. There used to be a Q seventy-five to the subway. And, um, there are areas in Fresh Meadows that you, that we, I should say, don't have access to subway. And I just wanted to, uh, make note over here, the Q sixty-four bus that exists now, the subway station at Seventy-first Continental, uh, I rarely go to this area because I just, it's really a hassle to get to. And, um, hmm, it goes from Seventy-first Continental down to one Sixty-Fourth Street via Jewel. And it ends. The new Q seventy-three could go, then turn on one Sixty-Fourth Street, then turn on Seventy-third Avenue. And that, Seventy-third Avenue from one Eighty-Eighth Street to one Sixty-Fourth Street is very wide. There is, that area should have a bus a- access. And then, this is that Q seventy-three that's got, gotten chopped off the list, let it go straight down.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Our next speaker is Hassan Krasnagi, Krasnagi, followed by Dionne, um, excuse me, Dionne Noreen Sutrobon. Or sorry, David, please go.
Thank you. My name is David Kupferberg, Passengers United, the only advocacy group to attend all fourteen Queens Community Board meetings. Regarding bus stop balancing, the proposed changes to local stops are an insult to the residents of Queens. After all, seventeen percent of the Queens population is three hundred and eighty-six thousand. But the MT does not want general decisions. It wants specifics. Therefore, I hereby submit my proposed bus stop list containing the proposed final plan. And the lists are extensive. I also made a ten-part critique of the proposed final plan with bus stop lists. And the lists are extensive. The proposed, uh, final plan does not accommodate the projected influx of riders that the central business tolling program loosely called congestion pricing is guaranteed to have. The MT has refused to incorporate the thousands of comments already received since the release of the proposed final plan in December twenty twenty-three. The MTA has refused to acknowledge that it has not properly factored accessibility and equity. The MTA has refused to acknowledge a petition signed by nearly thirty-three hundred people to halt bus stop balancing. In other words, the MTA has refused to do their due diligence. The MTA does not know what is best for us. Only know, only the people know what is best. Thank you. How are the people?
Our next speaker is Hassan Krasnagi. Hassan Krasniki, followed by Charles Yu. Hassan? Okay, we're moving on to Charles Yu, followed by Len Man, uh, excuse me, Len Manises.
Hello, good evening. My name is Charles Yu. I'm the Vice President of Economic Development at the Long Island City Partnership. I'm here to express my strong support for the Queens Bus Network redesign proposed, uh, final plan. This redesign is a significant step forward for our community and small businesses for several reasons. Firstly, the improved connections to the Hunter's Point Waterfront and ferry landings will greatly enhance accessibility for both residents and visitors. The waterfront is a key area of development and activity. And better bus connections will ensure that more people can enjoy its amenity and contribute to, to its vibrancy. Secondly, the enhanced north-south connections within Long Island City will significantly aid in the circulation of people throughout the neighborhood. The improvement is critical, uh, for fostering a more integrated community and supporting economic growth. Uh, thirdly, the increased service schedule reliability on key routes in Long Island City will provide much-needed consistency for commuters and residents alike. Um, it ensures that people can depend on buses to get to work, school, and other important destinations on time. Additionally, I would like to, uh, take this opportunity to bring up a longstanding request from the Hunter's Point community, and that is adding a new local bus route through the Manhattan, uh, through the Midtown Tunnel as an alternative to, and, uh, to augment the seven train. Uh, this proposed change, the proposed changes hold the potential to significantly enhance the public transit, support local businesses, and improve the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. We look forward to collaborating with you, uh, to make Long Island City a better place for everyone. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Len Manies, followed by Ian Bergstrom. Len Manies? Okay, our next speaker is Ian Bergstrom.
My name is Ian Bergstrom. I'm a thirty-one-year resident of Floral Park, New York. I'm also a civil litigation attorney. I oppose the proposal regarding the Q one-ten bus route proposal. Floral Park, Belrose, and Elmont are adjoining neighborhoods. The combined population is approximately eighty-four thousand, six hundred forty residents. The Long Island Railroad offers the Belmont Park, Elmont UBS Arena, Floral Park, and Belrose Village train stations. Nassau County offers the nice public busing service for the public. The neighborhoods offer accessibility to ride-share services. The neighborhoods offer busing services for schoolchildren. The neighborhoods consist of elementary schools and public high schools. The neighborhoods consist of residential and commercial properties. The vast majority of residents travel by means of car and train. The implementation of the MTA busing service frustrates the response times for the Floral Park Police Department, Nassau County Police Department, Floral Park Fire Department, Floral Park Department of Public Works, Town of Hempstead Highway Department, Nassau County Department of Public Works, New York State Department of Transportation, and local ambulatory services. The residents pay tens of thousands of dollars as property taxes to finance the essential services. The Federal Department of Energy determined that New York State residents experience the highest average commute time of thirty-three point two minutes per destination throughout America. The proposed busing service increases the average travel time for Floral Park, Belrose, and Elmont residents. The neighborhoods do not have the infrastructure to tolerate the commercial developments and additional public busing services. The commercial developments are the redevelopment of Belmont Park, UBS Arena, and the commercial shopping complex they're at. The suburban neighborhoods are drowning in congestion and traffic because New York State forces commercial developments upon the residents. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynn Pombonio, followed by Luis Lopez.
Good evening and thank you. I begin with a question before I introduce myself. If the good people of Queens who are all here tonight need their buses in Queens, as so many speakers have emphasized as they have spoken, why is the MTA proposing sending these buses into Nassau County and into places in Nassau County that are very congested and would delay the buses' return to Queens? It's a very important question. My name is Lynn Pombonio. I'm the Deputy Mayor of the Village of Floral Park, as well as the former Superintendent of Schools in the Floral Park Belrose School District, which services Floral Park, Belrose, and Belrose Terrace students. That is significant in, in my comments, which will be very specific to the proposal, by the way. The entire Village of Floral Park is completely bisected east to west by the elevated Long Island Railroad tracks. Only four avenues, all with one lane in each direction, are available for all vehicular traffic traveling northbound and southbound through and within the Village of Floral Park. The MTA bus proposal uses the busiest sections of two of these four north-southbound avenues to access the Floral Park Railroad Station. The MTA proposal calls for buses to travel along Carnation Avenue to enter the villages to where the Long Island Railroad Station is located. Carnation's narrow, single north and southbound lanes also include curbside parallel parking that serves a large number of single and multifamily residents along this avenue. In addition, the proposed section of Carnation is the only reliable route carrying students, uh, from Belrose Terrace and Belrose Village to the Floral Park, uh, schools, the number of schools there. The, um, return trip for the buses out to Jericho Turnpike from South Tyson Avenue are equally congested with another elementary school along the way. And this is not an acceptable.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Luis Lopez, followed by Juan Castillo.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm here about fifty-six bus. Uh, sometimes we wait up to forty minutes, even longer, and then you have four or five buses that come right behind it. There's a lot of, uh, older people. It's an aging population in Jamaica and Woodhaven. And once they get past Seventy-Fifth Elders, it's kind of like a, a straight shot. It would be good if they had like a limited bus that would leave the commercial part of Jamaica and skip a couple of stops and then just maybe make stops at, at the bus stops, like when they do with the shuttles. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thank you. Our next speaker is Juan Castillo, followed by Faran Sharif.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about the Queens Bus Network Design and some helpful suggestions. I would like to see in your proposed network redesign that the the Q five would be upgraded to select bus service and have it serve all day with at the Green Acres Mall. And for the eighty-five to go all day, they limited to Green Acres Mall with the locals ending at Rosedale. My second suggestion is to have the the Q twelve, which will be switched with the Q thirteen, West of one sixty-sixth to have it go down Little Neck Parkway, replacing the Q thirty-six to Jamaica Avenue Jericho Turnpike, then go into Nassau County to the Floral Park L I double R station. My third suggestion is to afford the the Q forty-six limited to be upgraded into select bus service and have it serve Long Island Jewish Ha- Hospital with locals ending at two-sixtieth and Little Little Neck Parkway. Also, I propose, I I'm opposed against the the B fifteen and B thirty-five having been replaced by the B fifty-five select. In fact, they, both of them should be, have their own S B S line. So the B fifteen S B S will go from Branch, Bushwick Avenue, Grand Street, by the L to J K Airport, as well as the thirty-five, the my my other gas stand to thirty-nine and first. Lastly, I'll, I also want the fifty-five, the B X fifty-five to be reinstated as a select bus service operating from Porton Plaza to Laguardia Airport, all this to be funded by the congestion pricing plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Faran Sharif, followed by Alex Leguzamo.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Faran Sharif, and I'm representing the Office of Senator James Sanders Junior of Southeast Queens. I am here today to speak about the Queens Bus Network redesign. After reviewing the Queens Bus Network redesign and going over with this with our constituents, our office cannot go against the interest of our community, and so our office opposes the current Queens Bus Network redesign proposed by the M T A. We cannot support this redesign plan when residents of one hundred and thirtieth Street and South Ozon Park will lose access to the Q ten bus, meaning that they lose access to the A train station and their preferred Q Garden station. We cannot support this plan when the proposed Q eighty-six bus runs through Huxley Street in Rose, in Rosedale, which is an extremely tight bottleneck. Such a proposed bus line would make it hazardous for residents and bus operators. Additionally, this plan would leave several areas in our district as transit deserts. For example, Francis Lewis Boulevard in Rosedale, among many others. And the elimination of bus stops without considering the elderly citizens and disabled is unacceptable, considering that our district, Southeast Queens, has one of the longest commute times in the country. Our office hopes to work with the M T A to make improvements to the Queens Bus Network redesign so that it can be reliable for all citizens throughout Queens, including Southeast Queens. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Alex Leguzamo, followed by Rico Sukioka.
On behalf of City Council members, uh, um, Joan Ariola, District Thirty-two in Queens, I'm going to read the statement from the office, and I also have copies that I'd like to uh give into the record. Um, for uh Councilmember Joan Ariola. As the representative of a district that that is already lacking in public transportation options, I believe that many of the changes being planned under the Queens Bus redesign will impart undue hardship on many of my constituents. The change of the uh Q thirty-five from Newport Avenue to Rockaway Beach Boulevard and the cancellation of the Q twenty-two west of Beach one sixteen Street both serve to illustrate this well. Many of the Q thirty-five users in Bell Harbor and Napansett are seniors, and the transfer of the bus one additional avenue away leaves many living on the bayside of the peninsula unnecessarily isolated. The current three Q thirty-five bus runs down the center of the community, a location that makes most sense and should remain in place. Also, bus stops along the Q thirty-five, as well as all other bus routes throughout Queens, the bus stops are also being placed further apart, adding more strain for the many riders who depend on these buses, many of who are elderly and have trouble walking long distances. Also, residents of Ozon Park living south of Rockaway Boulevard between Cross Bay Boulevard and the Aqueduct Race Track also have also found their services cut completely. The Q eleven, which currently runs through this area, it is said to be eliminated, leaving people in the entire centerfield portion of Ozon Park without a single bus line, something which is unacceptable, especially to the many seniors who depend on the current Q eleven bus to get around. One stop, uh, one, one, on top of this, the new Q fifty-one bus line to Rockaway Boulevard.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Rico Sukioka, followed by John Lynch.
Um, hi, good afternoon, or evening, rather. Thank you for your time this evening to listen to the community concerns. I'm here to voice my concerns about the plan to route the Q thirty-one away from Bell Boulevard. Um, the Q thirty-one is currently one of two bus lines that support the Bayside Long Island Railroad Station. Um, and rerouting the thirty-one away from the Bell Boulevard would limit access to the city and um city and subway network for northeastern Queens residents and commuters who already have limited access options. Um, set options being the seven train in Flushing and the E F and J trains in Jamaica and the Port Washington Long Island Railroad line. Um, the seven train in Flushing is already an incredibly stressed and congested transit hub, and the Q thirty-one line currently pulls from multiple other bus lines that go to Flushing and make the um train stations in Jamaica and Long Island Railroad a viable alternative. Um, also, the Q thirty-one is the only direct line from northeastern Queens directly to J F K. Personally, um, routing the thirty-one away from the Bayside station would um increase my travel time to J F K by about an hour. Um, the Q thirty-one currently serves a multiple of schools, public parks, public libraries, community centers. Um, and the residents and commuters all depend on access to these facilities via public transport network. Uh, Bell Boulevard is home to many small businesses um that depend on business from the commuters that utilize the Q thirty-one and its further connections. Um, and the facilities previously mentioned, and these businesses serve as third-place spaces that are essential to um, you know, community engagement, social engagement, civil engagement um for the residents. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Our next speaker is John Lynch, followed by Felicia Johnson on Zoom. John Lynch?
Good evening, ladies and gents. Uh, regarding for tonight, the the notice for tonight, uh, not many people found out about. The only way how I know about it, the local Queens Chronicle paper, the last two weeks, they had notices in there. Um, one sign on a bus in the last two weeks, the Q eleven, one sign. And then this morning, W C B S radio, um, they had a story about that. They're gonna have it here tonight. I'm here basically regarding the Q thirty-eight um in Middle Village. The um, they want to stop the Q thirty-eight at Fresh Pond Road and just quite frankly dump people where they would have to wait maybe up to fifteen minutes for their Q fourteen um to get them the rest of their way. And my suggestion is to let the Q thirty-eight run down to the Queen Center. If you're gonna start the Q fourteen, let it do it from McDonald's right across the street or or whatever, if it was McDonald's, right there on the Q fourteen. Um, also, bus stop you're saving is twenty seconds each stop. If you have like two or three um stops missing, a senior's gonna miss a minute or more. It's gonna take a lot of time. I've noticed everyone's noise. There's a lot of people that have discussed seniors tonight. Please take that into consideration. You know, i- i- it's it's a struggle for them, and twenty seconds to me is not gonna make that much of a difference. If you have bus stops that are right next to each other, like a block away, yes, I understand that. But not, you know, breaking it up. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just want to note for folks in the room, if you have registered to speak but you have not heard your name, but you do have a yellow card, please raise it in the air. Luke? Can you collect the yellow cards of folks that are registered to speak but they have not heard their names? So that I can collect them and we can finish out the hearing. Thank you. We're gonna move to Zoom. Our next two speakers are Felicia Johnson on Zoom and Darlene Lonza. Felicia Johnson?
Yes, ca- can you hear me?
I can hear you. Please begin.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening. Very quickly, we've heard from just about all my elected officials and their representatives. My name is Felicia Johnson, and I am the District Manager for Community Board Fourteen. I just want to thank first M T A for coming out to our transportation meetings. Um, we did submit a letter in April regarding um one of the enhances we would like to see to one of our line. I just want to take into consideration, I don't expect that you're going to be redesigning the Queens Bus Network anytime soon. So before you submit a final plan, please consider the fact that we have several developments coming to the Rockaway Peninsula, including the Auburn East Project, which is going to be on Beach Thirty-Fifth Street. So we would be interested in having a sit-down with the M T A to discuss the future growth of the east end of the Rockaway Peninsula. That development is looking to bring upwards of fifteen hundred new families. And we accepted the fact that um the bus was gonna go to Beach Forty-Ninth, but keep in mind that long-term that um we need to include, uh, you need to look at the buses extending their routes to encompass and incorporate all the new developments, but specifically right now, the Auburn East Project, which we want that bus to terminate at um at Beach Forty-Ninth, so uh, I mean, it's at Beach Forty-Ninth now, but to Beach Thirty-Fifth. So before you submit your final, final plan, please just put that into consideration before we have to go back and redesign it to accommodate our new residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bibi Shaw.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Bibi Shaw. I'm a, and I'm an advocate for the people in South Ozon Park. Uh, I have a petition here that we've completed, um, opposing the Queens Bus redesign plan along one thirtieth Street and Rockaway Boulevard in South Ozon Park. I would like to present this to M T A at the ending of my speech. Uh, I want you guys to know that you, M T A was being very unfair to our community in twenty-twenty-three when they removed that Q ten bus stop on Sutter Avenue because a veteran had connections to M T A, and he did not wanted the the bus stop to be next to his uh residence. And he got that bus stop removed. When that bu- when M T A removed that bus stop, it caused severe hardship on our, on all of us living there. We had to walk down from our homes, down a long avenue to cross Rockaway Boulevard to get that Q ten bus. At night, we hours in the morning, and the cold weather, it was unbearable for us. It is evidence that there is injustice in our com- in our transportation political system. Even though M T collected feedback about residents' needs, they did not change anything for us to and cater for the people in the redesign plan. If M T continues to target the Q ten bus, even though they were informed that the Q nine will not provide services to all of our four schools in the area, and the Q seven cannot hold the capacity of schoolchildren and families who take the route on a daily basis, then they will show our people that true injustice, what true injustice look like. M T A redesign plan stated they want to speed up travel and simplify services, but this is not true. What they're really doing is causing severe hardship to our citizens by completely changing routes, doubling our commute time, forcing us to pay four fares after transfer on a daily, on a daily basis, restricting us from accessing the A train at Lefferts Boulevard.
Thank you for your comment.
Um, I'm calling out to.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for, thank you, thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kevin Fitzgerald, followed by Eric Menjivar.
Good evening. I'm Mayor Kevin Fitzgerald from the Incorporated Village of Floral Park. Our village of over sixteen thousand residents is currently served by both the Long Island Railroad and the N twenty-four Nice Bus. For the following reasons, the village respectively objects to the new Q one-ten bus from traversing the village via the potentially Carnation Avenue, Tulip Avenue, Caroline Place, and/or South Tyson Avenue. The proposed streets are narrow and heavily used, especially during the A M and P M rush hours. Secondly, due to the narrow width of Caroline Place, the potential location of the bus stop or terminal stop near the Long Island Railroad Station, it will make Caroline Place potentially not passable or significantly slow traffic when a bus is stopped or just waiting for its next westbound run to begin. The terminus of the line could increase the amount of police presence or assistance needed at the Long Island Railroad Station. Will a full-time M T A police presence be established? Or is the M T A expecting the Floral Park Police Department and turn Floral Park taxpayers to respond and pick up the additional costs? The new Q one-ten route we'll be covering is also serviced by the Long Island Railroad Hempstead Line and the N twenty-four Nice Bus. Why is the M T A changing the route to an area and populous, already served by two other similar routes? Lastly, the village code of Floral Park, Section six oh two, provides that the streets and public grounds of a village constitute a separate highway, district, and under the exclusive control and supervision of the Board of Trustees. To date, we are unaware of any formal submission to the village by the M T A to use our roads under the aforementioned codes. Additionally, in the event of the objection by the village, the M T A will have to abide by New York State Transportation Law, Section one fifty-three, subsection five. In closing, I would like to also call to attention the resolution of the Floral Park Board of Trustees, passed on July twenty-six, July sixteenth, objecting to the Q one-ten proposed route and the written comments submitted early in the week with additional details and substantial rationale on the various points of the objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Menjivar, followed by George Koffer.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eric Menjivar, and I'm a member of the College Point Civic and Tax Press Association. I want to bring to light to the recent changes in the final draft regarding College Point. While we appreciate uh keeping a hundred and twenty-seven straight on the route of the Q twenty-five uh and several stops have been removed uh from the chopping block, uh, we still have several stops on the Q twenty-five route and also the Q sixty-five route are still going to be removed. It is simply unacceptable to simply change the destinations of these new routes. Having the Q six, uh, the Q twenty-six uh replace the Q twenty, Q sixty-five in College Point, which will go to Fresh Meadows instead of Jamaica. Uh, we are seeing a lot of uh, uh, we're still seeing a lot of uh the impacts of what of what will happen when we see this bus redesign come into effect. The lesson to be learned for College Point is that we do not need a redesign of the routes. It is a question of frequency. We see an increased frequency in the final draft, but why should it come at the cost of a of a of a redesign and restructuring of the routes in College Point? What I'm asking is to simply keep the stops that are on the Q twenty-five and the Q sixty-five, to restore the Q twenty-eight in College Point, and to simply uh do more outreach in College Point. Last uh, last time in which we had a public outreach was two years ago, in which we had a specific event uh to hear uh t- uh transit riders' uh concerns. We have not heard back from the M T A coming back uh to College Point for any uh outreach for this uh current final draft. We want to see an extension of the period for public outreach so it can reach more uh of the transit riders and to collaborate more with organizations that actually do advocate for riders, such as Passengers United. We will uh, we will hope to see uh complete uh redesign in frequency instead of routes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final. Our final speaker tonight is George Koffer on Zoom. George Koffer?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So I'm George Koffer, speaking in my private capacity. The MTA has not shown any revenue and, you know, the actual revenue hours in the new proposed redesign. And the general methodology leaves much to be desired. Unlike the small changes, which usually require staff summaries, very detailed, the number of riders affected, both positively and negatively, this one, this plan did not have any such staff summaries, and it did not even have the level of detail in the existing conditions report that the Brooklyn and Bronx redesigns had. There's a few proposals that I'm gonna, that I'm gonna state. The rest are gonna be submitted in writing. The Q-44 needs to be extended to Fordham. That was in the first two drafts of the plan and received a lot of support. And it was just kind of pulled out at the last minute. The QM-5, eight, and thirty-five should run on the service road to the Long Island Expressway, serving neighborhoods. The original plan had it go going on the highway itself. Going on the service road would serve more neighborhoods. The ten and the forty, QM-ten forty, should run to College Point instead of looping around Lefrak. Springfield Boulevard and Bell Boulevard need to be connected. That was proposed in, with the QT-71 in 2019 and the Q-78 in 2022. Again, another very popular proposal. Eighty-Fourth Street and Howard Beach needs to have bidirectional service, as proposed in 2019 and 2022. The Q-4 needs to be extended to Helmont Road to connect to the N-1. The fourteen needs to be extended to Ridgewood to maintain the connection to that end of the M-Train. Fifty-two needs to be extended to Bayswater and Far Rockaway. The QM-3 should be the downtown route since the Long Island Railroad doesn't serve downtown. The superexpresses of the QM-2, twenty, and five should be restructured to serve Hudson Yards both directions and provide bidirectional service in the Queens Midtown Tunnel. Jackson Heights, South Bronx, Jackson Heights, sorry, LaGuardia, South Bronx.
Thank you for your comment.
All right.
Our last and final speaker on Zoom is Michael Chan. Michael Chan?
Hello? Anyone here?
Yes, hello.
Hello, hi.
Yes.
Okay.
Please go.
Yeah, okay. This regarding the Q-34, replace Q-61, okay? The proposed schedule is too long, if possible, to shorten. The early morning times should be ten minutes instead of thirty minutes. The AM peak should be ten minutes instead of eighteen minutes. The midday should be fifteen minutes until, I mean, until, instead of twenty-eight minutes, the peak should be ten minutes instead of twenty minutes. Evening should be fifteen minutes instead of twenty minutes, and the late evening is thirty minutes and don't have change at all. The Q-15 bus proposed schedule for the early morning should be ten minutes instead of fifteen minutes. The rest can remain in place, okay? Also, I wonder if possible, if the bus cancel, okay, the schedule. Can the MTA send a text message to phone, okay, so that people can plan the alternative route, okay? Every time the bus cancel, okay, late. Okay, I prefer you guys send a text message, okay, for the cancel of the bus, okay? Yeah. Also, when is the thirty-day unlimited Omni coming? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The time is now eight sixteen, and we have concluded our public hearing. We want to thank all members of the public that joined us today. For those who did not do so already, we encourage you to take our short survey via the QR code or link that is displayed on Zoom. The link can also be found in the Q and A section of our Zoom room. Again, the survey is available in Bangla, Chinese, French, Italian, Korean, Portuguese, Russian, Spanish, and Yiddish. Using the right-corner dropdown menu to select the preferred language after scanning the code or using the link. As a final reminder, in addition to this hybrid public hearing, there are several other ways you can provide comments to us on the proposed final plan through July twenty-six, 2024, at eight PM. Comments can be submitted by visiting new.mta.info/2024-QBNR-hearing, or you can call six four six two five two six seven seven seven, or via mail to QBNRpublichearing2broadwayd1694newyorknewyork10004. Again, the time is now eight seventeen. This concludes our hearing. We thank you so much for your participation. Have a good and safe night getting home. Bye-bye.